Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Abby Jacobson is the Rabbi at Emmanuel Synagogue. She's going to lead us in our invocation afterwards. I'll ask Councilman Greiner, he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Members of Council, and thank you, everyone. In the Jewish lectionary cycle, we are reading the stories of Joseph. And it calls to mind the idea of the dream. When the baker has a dream, he dreams of bread. When the cup bearer who is in jail has a dream, he dreams of bearing the cup for the Pharaoh. And when the Pharaoh has a dream, Pharaoh dreams of the four things which for Pharaoh really encompass Egypt. Grain, their chief food source, cattle, their chief export, the Nile, the chief source of their religion, and Pharaoh, who is himself supposed to be the center of Egypt. What is amazing, though, in my opinion, is that when Joseph interprets the dream of the Pharaoh, and of the cup bearer, and of the baker, what Joseph interprets is not what they put into it. What they put into it was very much a reflection of themselves, but what Joseph interpreted out of it was something which was best for community. May it be your will, Lord, our God and God of our ancestors, to grant these proceedings today with wisdom, to guide those newly-elected officials with your good counsel, so that all of us may bring our individual dreams, which are reflections of ourselves, to the table and to the podium today, and that what comes out of it may be not a reflection of each individual Oklahoman, but rather a reflection of community and a reflection of togetherness. I'm sorry, Jews don't really end prayers with amen. It's sort of the blessing that the Rabbi shut up is kind of the way we end it, so thank you very much.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for Each month, the Foundation for the Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Downtown Oklahoma City help us identify one teacher in the Oklahoma City metro area who recognizes our Teacher of the Month. And I am proud to recognize Suzanne Carter and ask Suzanne to come forward. Crowded chambers, I've lost Suzanne for a moment, but here she is, coming up this morning. We have a resolution, I'll ask the clerk to read it. It will get settled.
Whereas Suzanne Carter has been named Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for December 2013. Whereas Suzanne teaches first grade at Telstar Elementary School and has served Oklahoma City public school students for 14 years. Whereas Suzanne Carter has been honored as the Telstar Elementary School Building Teacher of the Year and as a finalist in the 2013-2014 Oklahoma City Public School District Teacher of the Year competition. Whereas Suzanne Carter actively seeks to involve families in the education of their children. Suzanne teaches in a way that motivates students and awakens their creativity and curiosity. Suzanne seeks training and learning experiences to improve the classroom experience for her students. And she also focuses on helping her students to become responsible, caring citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor and the Council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Suzanne Carter for her selection as December 2013 Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation for Suzanne. She did great work. It might have been premature because we officially have to vote on this, so I'm going to ask for a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and it is now official. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Oklahoma City City Council, Mayor Cornet, the Foundation of Oklahoma City Public Schools, Rotary Club. This is truly an honor. I thank the Lord for my parents, Sherman and Sylvia Minster, my husband, James Carter, my sisters and brothers, my children, my students, my principal Vanessa Van Trees, and the parents at Telstar Elementary. It's through their support who helps me to be the person who I am today, just like it's through the support of Oklahoma City Public Schools community, their donations and their time that they volunteer, which is really greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. This will help the children set their goals and reach for them.
I show our appreciation. And each month, the Oklahoma City South Kiwanis Club helps us recognize one of our employees as the Employee of the Month. Now can you imagine, over 4,000 employees and trying to select one each month? This month, the winner is Nancy Cullen. She's come to us from the Utilities Department. Nancy, come on up. Oh, over here. I'm getting lost this morning. We have a resolution, I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Nancy Cullen has been a city employee for four years and is a communications dispatcher for the wastewater section in line maintenance division of the Utilities Department. Whereas Nancy answers phone calls from customers and other city departments, dispatches emergency water and wastewater calls to crews in the field, enters call data daily, and researches information on calls when necessary. Whereas Nancy has a genuine desire to help and provide excellent service to our customers. She listens to their concerns and always takes the time necessary to find out exactly what the problem is to help the crews better respond. Whereas Nancy Cullen's previous experience as line maintenance field crew member repairing broken water mains has proved to be invaluable when talking to customers about their issues. She knows what questions to ask in order to provide field crews with the most critical and up-to-date information. Whereas Nancy Cullen regularly works 4:00 PM to midnight, Tuesday through Saturday, but she readily volunteers to work overtime on weekends when the need arises due to staff shortages. Whereas Nancy Cullen sets a great example for her coworkers by going the extra mile, keeping a positive attitude, and always smiling. Whereas this council desires to recognize Nancy Cullen for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Nancy Cullen, December 2013, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
And let's show our appreciation to Nancy and her coworkers. To make it official, I'll ask for a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and you got them all. Congratulations. Thank you all one more time, and please pass along our best wishes to your coworkers.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I am truly honored about this. I'm really accepting this award for all of line maintenance dispatcher, emergency dispatchers. We handle so many calls, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. And I'm there to help the citizens of Oklahoma City, but every one I work with give everything they've got to get these jobs done, taken care of in a very timely manner, and help the citizens of Oklahoma City. But I am blessed. God's blessed me throughout my whole life, being out in the field, but also here at line maintenance as a dispatcher, working with some great people, and they are all wonderful employees, and I accept this for all of us. Thank you.
Indeed. Represent yourself. We are also coming up on the 20th anniversary of MAPS, and we have some distinguished visitors with us today. We have former Mayor Ron Norick, former Mayor Kirk Humphries. We have at least three city council people that were on board today. I recognize former Ward Four Councilwoman Frances Lowry, former Ward Two Councilmember Beverly Hodges. I see former Ward Seven Councilwoman Willa Johnson. Are there other council members that joined us today? Okay? I see people representing the business community, people representing the Chamber. Why doesn't everyone that's come up here today to help us acknowledge its 20th anniversary of MAPS come forward? And we'll read the proclamation.
Whereas on December 14, 1993, the citizens of Oklahoma City voted to invest in the future of their city by approving a five-year, one-cent sales tax to fund the metropolitan area projects commonly known as MAPS. Whereas the MAPS sales tax generated over $360 million to fund nine quality-of-life projects, including the Oklahoma State Fairgrounds, the Chickasaw-Briketown Ballpark, Bricketown Canal, Cox Convention Center, Civic Center Music Hall, the Chesapeake Energy Arena, the Oklahoma River, the Ronald J. Norick Downtown Library, and a trolley system. Whereas the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber partnered with the city to support, promote, and fund the successful MAPS campaign. Whereas the MAPS Oversight Committee was formed consisting of 21 members, including Committee Chairman Ed Barth, to ensure all nine projects were successfully completed. Whereas the MAPS projects took 10 years to complete, much of that time coexisting with Oklahoma City's efforts to rebuild after the tragic 1995 bombing of the Alpha Pima Federal Building. Whereas in the past 20 years, after rising together in the face of tragedy, Oklahoma City has experienced a major renaissance that continues today and is a model for communities across the nation. Whereas since the passage of MAPS in 1993, Oklahoma City has seen more than $5 billion in new public and private investment throughout the community, and because of that investment, the city experiences the lowest unemployment rate in the nation. Whereas the community wishes to celebrate the 20th anniversary of the historic metropolitan area projects vote and the ongoing MAPS initiatives with special events in recognition of the community's leadership, including the city council, the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber, the civic and business community, Mayor Mick Cornet, former Mayor Kirk Humphries, and former Mayor Ronald J. Norick, the father of MAPS. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim December 14, 2013, as MAPS 20th Anniversary Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation for the leaders of that 1993 initiative. I'm first going to let the mayor speak.
Well, thank you, Mick. I just want to really thank not only my former council people that are here, and I'm so pleased to see them, I haven't seen Frances in such a long time, it's nice to see you, and of course Beverly and Willa. It took a genuine team effort to do all this and to get it done. I'm glad to see Clay Bennett here this morning. Clay was on our original steering committee that put this together, and you know what's happened after that with bringing in the Thunder, which has been such a great success. And the Chamber, Roy, is here with the Chamber. We couldn't have done it without them. The main thing is that we did it with the total support of the citizens, and I want to thank the citizens because they're the ones that really, really did this. They trusted the council. The council followed through in what it said it was going to do. It built all the projects. It built it in a first-class manner, but without the support of the citizens, it would have never happened, and I realize that. And as long as this city council, and I know there's a lot of good people here, and I enjoy that we have people that will serve their city, and I really do appreciate everybody that does serve on the council. It's not an easy job, but it's one that's very rewarding. And as long as the councils continue to do what they said they're going to do, the citizens of our community will support any initiative that they put forward, and I think that's finally important. Our success has been, far exceeds anything that I ever thought it would do. I would have been happy if we would have, you know, we spent $350 million. If we'd have doubled that money over time with private development, I would have thought that would have been a success. We've now done about 15 times that investment, almost over $5 billion of private money, and what that's done is provided jobs. Jobs provides tax revenue. Tax revenue is what pays for police, and fire, and streets, and parks, and roads, and bridges, finally important to the city. So on behalf of myself as former mayor, but on behalf of the citizens of Oklahoma City, I want to congratulate you on what you did to build our city. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I usually follow Ron in these presentations, and I'm delighted to do that. It was my pleasure to follow him in office, and you know, if you look back over the last 20 years, I think the one mark that exemplifies Oklahoma City over this period of renaissance is unity. You have unity between our elected officials and our business leadership and our other civic organizations, and that's shown by who's here today. When I'd been mayor a month or two, we lacked $30 million on having enough money to finish the arena. And it'd been suggested, why don't we just put it on hold? And I gathered together kind of a kitchen cabinet of people, I could ask their advice, and one of them was Clay Bennett. Clay was chairman of the Chamber at the time. He said, "We can do a poll." And so we did a poll, and it indicated that with the right approach, the voters would approve extending the tax. And the council was against me, eight to one, but with Clay's poll, I was able to turn them. And in December of 98, the voters voted to approve a six-month extension on the sales tax. After that, Clay brought some friends to play basketball in the arena. And aren't you glad we extended that tax six months? That's been a win for Oklahoma City. So thank you, Oklahoma City. Thank you for the unity, and let's keep it going.
Well, I don't want to be redundant of what's been said because they have certainly said it correctly, but I would just say on behalf of the thousands of members of the Chamber, I think we all see what can really happen in a community when the public sector and the private sector join hands. And that really means that the sky's the limit, and I think everything we've seen so far exemplifies that. So I think it shows us the road we need to be going down. So I would echo what the other mayor said. Thank you very much, Mayor.
We, you know, there may be, you know, no centerpiece more important to the city's renaissance than the Oklahoma City Thunder. And Clay, congratulations on this six-game home stand where you swept all six opponents that came into the MAPS arena. We appreciate it very much. Yeah. Clay said he had a lot to do with it. We appreciate it. Thank you all. In recent weeks, we have been thanking many of those in our community who reached out and went above and beyond the call of duty after our storms that took place in May in South Oklahoma City and the community of Moore. And we complete that process this morning by bringing in, well, some members of the Rock Assembly of God and St. Andrews United Methodist Church. Could you guys come forward? We have a citation.
Whereas thousands of residents of Oklahoma City and surrounding communities were devastated by an F-5 tornado and severe storms on May 20, 2013. Whereas the City of Oklahoma City pauses to remember those who perished in the storms and those grieving the loss of loved ones. Whereas the call to provide immediate lifesaving assistance after the tornado hit was answered courageously, not only by those trained for such events, the local emergency response agencies, including Oklahoma City Police and Fire, but by individuals from outside and inside the devastation, teachers, residents, and business owners. Whereas in the days and weeks that followed, churches, schools, and other organizations reached out to those affected by the storms to provide day-to-day resources and assistance in rebuilding their homes and lives. Whereas Moore Norman Votech South Campus opened its doors to the City of Oklahoma City staff for the operation of Storm Recovery City Outreach Office. And whereas Rock Assembly of God and St. Andrews United Methodist Church graciously welcomed displaced residents and Oklahoma City emergency responders for weeks after the storms, offering their facilities and volunteers for the recovery efforts. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby express sincere appreciation to the leadership staff and members of the Moore Norman Votech School, Moore Schools, Rock Assembly of God, and St. Andrews United Methodist Church for their partnership with the city and their tireless support in the storm recovery efforts.
Let's show our appreciation to those from St. Andrews here. There's a little bit more to this story, as I understand it. Your church had watched a series of calamities before and really wanted to get more involved, and so you went to the Red Cross, you got registered, took a little training on how to work with the Red Cross in case there was a disaster forthcoming, and then came May 20. And you always were right there in the thick of it.
Thank you. Several years ago, some of you may remember that a ice storm gripped South Oklahoma City. Many businesses were shut down, schools were shut down, but our church was open in the midst of that. And at that time, we felt a little bit helpless because we were unprepared to be able to reach out into our community to help our people. And so we felt a strong sense that God has called us to do this. In the midst of that, we went through training to be an emergency shelter for the Red Cross, thinking perhaps another winter storm might bring some stranded motorists off Interstate 44 that would need a place to sleep, a place to stay warm, and a bowl of soup to eat. So we went through the training, little knowing that God was preparing our church for something much greater. South Oklahoma City, the Moore School District, is our home. Our families were at Plaza Towers. Our families were at Briarwood Elementary. Dr. Shelley McMillan, principal at Briarwood, is a member of our church. You know well the devastation that was there. Our church was blessed to be positioned and prepared to help people who'd been displaced from their homes. Sometimes they needed medical attention, sometimes they just needed food or supplies to clean up the destruction of their homes. Sometimes they just needed a hug. And so our church was glad to be of service to Christ and our community. And so on behalf of our 1,500 members at St. Andrews, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, we are grateful for this honor to God. Be all the glory. Thank you very much.
If I may just add a personal note, St. Andrews had the difficult task of serving as the reunification center the night of the storm, and it was a very difficult, everybody's levels of frustration and fear were probably at their height that evening as the children were being reunited with their parents. And then the Rock Church, having been pretty much displaced with our first responders and our command centers for many weeks, those two churches especially are true assets of Oklahoma City, not just South Oklahoma City. I want to thank them personally. Thank you.
Thank you for saying so, David. Now I'm going to ask Nancy Anthony of the Community Foundation to come forward. She stepped outside. Well, I'll just go out and get her. I'll tell you what we're going to do. I'll tell you a little bit of the story, and if Nancy has not returned by the time we finish reading it, we'll recognize her when she does re-enter the room. But Nancy is here because her community foundation does so many wonderful things and looks after a lot of endowments and helps a lot of people with their philanthropic efforts. She has also been the custodian for the anchor of the Battleship Oklahoma. And as many of you know from your history books, on December 7 of 1941, the Battleship Oklahoma was one of several in the United States Navy's fleet that was sunk at Pearl Harbor. Because that ship carries our state's name, it has become a very precious commodity in Oklahoma City and the state of Oklahoma's history. We are moving that anchor, and because of the continued interest, and we wanted to draw attention to the fact that the Community Foundation has found what they believe is an even better site than the current one, we have a proclamation to read. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the USS Oklahoma was commissioned in 1916 and served in World War I, protecting Allied convoys on their way across the Atlantic. After years of spending time in the Pacific, the ship was modernized in 1929 and rescued American citizens and refugees from the Spanish Civil War in 1936. Whereas on December 7, 1941, the USS Oklahoma was one of the nine ships attacked at Pearl Harbor. Eleven minutes after the attack, the ship rolled over, trapping much of its crew inside before sinking. In all, 429 sailors and Marines were killed. Whereas the ship's 10-ton anchor was recovered, and thanks to the efforts of Rear Admiral John E. Kirkpatrick, USNR retired, the USS Oklahoma Anchor has had a home in Oklahoma City since 1960. Whereas the USS Oklahoma Anchor had been on display in several Oklahoma City locations before finding its current home in Campbell Park in December 2005. And a reconstructed base, lighted flagpole, and USS Oklahoma Anchor state historical marker were added in 2006. Whereas the Oklahoma City Community Foundation was asked to act as the official conservator for the anchor, and since 2006, has issued a report to Washington on an annual basis. Whereas veterans have gathered at the anchor through the years on December 7 to remember the attacks that began World War II and the brave men and women who served their country and lost their lives on that fateful day. Whereas the City of Oklahoma City appreciates the invaluable efforts of Nancy Anthony and the Oklahoma City Community Foundation in moving, installing, maintaining, and providing the greatest of care to this important artifact of state, national, and world history. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby thank the Oklahoma City Community Foundation for its care and conservation of the USS Oklahoma Anchor.
Let's show our appreciation for Nancy and the Community Foundation in the memory of the Battleship Oklahoma. And if Nancy is able to rejoin us, we'll have her tell us a little bit more of the details when she gets here. We'll continue with the council agenda, though. We're on item three. These are items from the office of the mayor. Looks like we're on item 3C. This is the resolution to officially approve the additional dollars to go into the MAPS III sidewalk project. It was sent down to the subcommittee. It was sent down to the subcommittee, approved through the advisory board, and now comes back to the council. Is there a motion to move Item 3C?
I move approval.
You know, I have a question on that. How many miles of sidewalk will this provide?
This should get us very close to 70, 75 miles that were originally--
It'll essentially be our commitment that we made--
That's the goal.
Was there any thought about taking some money out of the contingency fund rather than the tax fund?
Well, we do have-- Well, the council has already authorized $4 million dollars coming out of fund balance you did last year that's coming forward, too. So that'll take it forward, but this will take that out of that MAPS program to meet those original--
Will the $4 million be in addition to this $9 million?
Yes.
Yeah. Those dollars are supplemental to the MAPS. That is to help us fulfill our wishes to build out the entire sidewalk master plan that was funded by MAPS-3. And so these MAPS dollars are going back into funding the MAPS-3 miles. But I would like to think that this council and future councils can continue to fund and so we can build that entire master plan, which is well beyond what we originally intended.
So last year, at the end of the year, we took the $4 million out of the fund balance in last fiscal year, which has not been spent yet, which will be programmed on top of this $9 million. And then that's on top of the $8 million that we will be considering this morning for the other fund balance projects.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions from council? Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. We have appointments on Item 3D and 3E. I look for a motion jointly.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 19th. And Item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 5th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Just one this morning, outside of the two that are listed on the agenda. And that's on Page 22, excuse me, under Item 8, J1. Item D, 3305 South Meta Avenue. Where it's to be stricken, that is now occupied.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Let's recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are eight items.
Move the item.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the MFA?
You don't have a question on the MFA? I'm sorry, it's on PPA.
Okay.
Mayor, I did have a question on the MFA, and it's on Item D. And with regard to the Affordable Healthcare Act, this is, we're renewing policies with Blue Cross and Blue Shield through December of '14. And have we had any communication back and forth with regard to whether or not all of our policies comply-- Debbie? Whether all of our policies comply with the current provisions of the Affordable Care Act?
Colin and Diana are constantly looking over that to make sure. I don't know if we have any recent communications. That's certainly a goal as we go forward, and I believe that they are, but let me get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you. I just appreciate an update on it.
All right. Cast your votes on the MFA. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. It's like three items.
Move the items.
All right. Comments or questions on the PPA?
Your Honor, on Item B, this is, has to do with the fairgrounds, arenas. What is the source of funds on that project? The whole list of things here--
On which item, sir?
PPA, Item B.
The change order?
Change order, yes. It's got sources of funds in here, and it's got a bunch of items listed. And I thought that all the fairgrounds work was going to be supported by the hotel motel tax.
Eric, what is the funding source on that? I think these are ADA improvements. And the last one is ADA improvements. This is the-- This is the horse barn.
No, this is--
Outside arena.
Right. So this is PPA B. This is the covered outside arena. The work that's on this change order is some additional pavement, storm drain, and some building items that were required. And what we have for the source of funds is the 2012 revenue bonds that were part of just the PPA fairgrounds projects themselves. So I need to do a little more research to tell you specifically what those are, but it was designated to the fairgrounds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the PPA. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Item A has been stricken, but we still need to vote on the claims and payroll. So how about a motion on Item B? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the item so that you can get a description.
How about a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there any individual considerations?
Your Honor, I have a few minor questions on 6A.1 and 6J.6.
Okay, pass. Go ahead.
On the Item 8.1, this is providing some new fire equipment.
Yes.
And it's rewarding the contract to the second--
We are.
bidder, not the first bidder.
Yes.
And what was the rationale for that? It was explained briefly in the document.
There's enough rationale on that. Amy Simpson and Craig Keith are both here from the Finance Department. I met with Chief Bryant and Craig about this on Wednesday afternoon. There were some-- A number of factors. The main factor, I think, was the fact that they did not have a long history of client lists, of preparing apparatus for the others, are very longstanding companies. There were some issues with the turning radius. There were some issues with the multi-- There's two phases in the construction processes where they aren't integrated, that they're put together in two different phases, or three different phases, I believe.
And the Farchi can speak to any operational issues associated with that. When we look at bids like this, we're evaluating the lowest and best. And when you get a very close margin on those vehicles, and you look at some of the different variables that Jim was talking about, where they're talking about difference in operations, or we have-- One of the factors that was included within the bids was that we could wait towards vehicles that we already have in service, where we're trained on working on that equipment. We have parts already for that type of equipment, and so there's some factors that are like that. So when we have a really close price margin, you don't have to go very far in the justification. We're justifying lowest and best, and we felt like the evidence that they provided that was included in the memos was sufficient to justify the decisions.
Okay. The-- How many pieces of the Ferrara equipment do we have in--
We have, I want to say about six of those engines.
Do we have spare parts for those? Because I thought the spare parts was one of the weakest justifications we had in--
Excuse me?
I thought the spare parts issue was sort of a weak issue. You know, we've got a number of different units. Do we have one unit that we settle on consistently purchased, and the spare parts issue just sort of go away, I think?
Well, anytime we do introduce a new manufacturer into our fleet, you know, we're required to-- There are certain proprietary parts and so forth that we're going to have to start purchasing for those various vehicles. So again, that's one of the reasons why we felt better going with the Ferrari bid, is because we already have a number of those vehicles in our fleet, and therefore we know what to stock for. And I think it's going to result in a savings overall, that we don't have to order additional parts for a new manufacturer.
Thank you.
Just want to clarify. He said Ferrari, not Ferrari.
The way I feel about cars, Ferraris would have been a better choice. We can get there quicker. We may not be able to do anything when you get there. We could--
Any other comments or questions from the council on the consent docket?
Your Honor, just a brief question. Who was Dale Leroy or Scooter Phillips Jr.?
You're talking about the item that's a roadway, renaming of a roadway. I can't answer that. It's not for introduction today.
At one point, did we have a--
We have a policy, and this does not meet the policy.
Yeah, okay, that's my concern. Don't meet policy. Thank you.
All right. Ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Under the concurrence docket, page 14 in your council packet. It's like 27 items on the concurrence docket today. Are there any requests for comments? All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on the concurrence, and it passed unanimously. Moves us on to Item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a zoning case in Ward 1. The address is 2015 North Kilpatrick Turnpike. It's currently a plan unit development, and it would become a new PUD if approved. James?
Yeah, this is kind of just a continuation of the PUDs that are around it. It was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. My only question is, have the TEs been-- Have they been agreed upon, and everything's good?
Yes.
Okay, well, I move for approval.
Okay? We have a second? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 3A2 is a zoning case in Ward 5 at 7805 South Pennsylvania Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would become a new simplified plan unit development. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there anyone signed up to speak on this? I'd move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on Item 8A2. It passed unanimously. Item 8B is a request for a special permit. This is a request from a hospital, and it's in Ward 7. John, you okay with this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am okay with this. I think this will allow a great opportunity for Ward 7, and especially this would allow a specialty hospital to expand their services in Ward 7. So I move for approval.
All right. We have a second? Cast your votes. Item 3B passed unanimously. Item 3C is an issue in Ward 7 that was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. The address is 10301 North I-35 Service Road. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become a new simplified planning and development. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have the applicant present?
Good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who is Brett Tucker, who is also here with me today, and Kendall Dillon. Our application is for an SPUD on I-35 just south of Britton. What the application will allow for is a quality commercial development abutting I-35 Service Road. It is immediately east of the U.S. Foods Distribution Center, and this is an SPUD where we went through several modifications. We initially had about a five-acre tract. Now we're down to about 1.7 acres. That allowed for a couple of commercial buildings as well as a billboard. So the issue at Planning Commission was twofold. One, making appropriate modifications to the facade, because it is an appearance corridor. So within our SPUD, we have agreed to appearance corridor guidelines. We've agreed to a 20% increase in the landscaping requirements. When we looked at the billboard issue, the city has requirements that are more strict than the state requirements as far as spacing. So we wanted to make sure that we met all of those. And what we found is that we do. We meet all city requirements, which are heightened, and we meet all the state requirements. When you look at the corridor, there are other billboards around. There was a billboard in this ward that was approved probably six to eight months ago. And so we felt like it was an appropriate use of the land, combined with the appropriate commercial restrictions that we place in the SPUD. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
A question on the write-up that the council received, they indicated the client did not agree with certain--
Yes, sir.
Has all those been resolved?
The TEs that we could not agree to were 2, 3, and 4, and those TEs asked to take out the billboard. And that was part of the application. So those two-- Or, excuse me, those three TEs we could not agree with.
So you want electronic message sign approval as well?
Yes, sir.
Does that be part of your billboard?
Yes, sir. That would be part of the billboard.
It won't be a separate sign?
Correct. The other signs are monument signs that will be accessory, one per building, to allow the end users of those commercial structures to put their building-- Or, excuse me, their company name out.
So to be clear, though, David, that the non-accessory sign is an electronic billboard--
Yes, ma'am.
--along I-35?
Yes, ma'am.
You said that the sign fits city and state regulations.
Yes, sir.
But it doesn't fit the guidelines of an appearance corridor. Is that right, or is that stated?
Well, the appearance corridor has some language about signage. When you read the appearance corridor guidelines, they are more suggestions. They don't have any, I think, real teeth to what is and is not permitted. So pursuant to guidelines, they are maybe not favored, but when you look up and down this corridor, it is commonplace. And especially in this area, right across the street, you have some heavy industrial that is definitely not within the appearance corridor guidelines.
Bob, you have any?
I was just going to clarify on the guidelines. The Planning Commission's developed guidelines for appearance corridors and additionally for PUDs, for signage in PUDs. Those three technical evaluations that they don't agree with are out of the PUD guidelines from the Planning Commission. And that's to prohibit the accessory-- The billboard, non-accessory building standards, so--
But much of the other appearance corridor guidelines have been incorporated into our SPUD, including the facade regulations, screening mechanical equipment, and the increase in landscaping points that we will be required to meet.
What is the purpose of the billboard? Is it just to help with the development financially? Is that kind of the thinking behind it?
That, and also, part of the thinking is to be able to utilize the end users on the site. So we'll have a component of accessory signage as well to attract those end users as they're traveling down I-35.
Okay.
I'm going to actually move for approval with technical assistance review.
Okay. And may I ask what technical assistance-- What is that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Technical evaluations. I'm sorry.
Okay. May I ask for a-- Maybe put this-- Continue or to put it to the heel? Because the TEs would remove the non-accessory sign portion of this, and that's one of the components.
Okay. Let's continue this for two weeks, and let's kind of work that out, if that's okay.
Two weeks. All right.
I move to--
Looking for a two-week deferral?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
If I may, real quickly, on the previous item, they are-- The CO is waiting for the special permit. If we could ask for the emergency on that, because they're ready to start building the hospital.
Okay. Can I-- Would it be appropriate for me to go out and ask for the emergency on--
Yeah, 3B.
3B. AB. 8B.
This is-- Yes, you're right. 8B. We have a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. On Item 8D, and this is ordinance, it's up for final hearing today. It deals with vacant and abandoned buildings. Guessing we have a few people that have signed up to speak. And Jim, I know you've handed out, and I hope many of the people that are here today have received this, because there's been a lot of conversations between the public hearing and today, which is when it's scheduled for a final vote. And hopefully, a lot of the angst over this has been worked out along the way, but I guess that's what we're about to find out.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just before we call people up, we're just-- The people who signed up to speak, we'd like to highlight some of the changes. And I'd ask Bob to come up and do that. After the meeting two weeks ago, council asked we meet with some of the concerned folks that showed up at the council meeting, and we've done that, and come up with some recommended changes that are before you today. And again, they're in handouts. If you don't have that handout, that should be available to you out in the lobby to get a copy of that. And I will say that all concerns have not been addressed, but we made a step in that direction to address those concerns. And with that, Bob, if you could highlight those.
Primarily, there are four proposed changes to the amendment that are highlighted. One is to clarify that residential structures will still require-- There'll be a 30-day requirement for registration. The major change there is that now we would require commercial structures-- They would have 12 months before they have to register. A lot of the discussion was they didn't-- The commercial brokers that we met with didn't feel comfortable with the 30-day requirement. They felt that commercial buildings are different. It takes longer to occupy-- It takes longer to occupy and market those. So we propose a 12-month timeframe there. We also added a provision about rehabbing buildings. This applies to residential and commercial. We added a six-month provision there. So you have, once you obtain a permit, you have six months before you have to register. Because there was some discussion about it needing longer than 30 days to rehab a building, and so we've added that provision. And then the last one has to do with, basically, I'll read it. The ordinance does not apply to any mortgagie or agent of mortgagie who is exempt from the local regulations under Federal Housing and Economic Recovery Act of 2008. And this addresses your concern about the lawsuit in Chicago that you brought up. And so those were the primary changes that we're proposing to the ordinance.
Bob, about how many people have you interacted with since the public hearing in hopes of trying to address their concerns?
Well, we, the meeting, I believe there were nine representatives from the commercial broker community, and then there were three or four from the residential representatives from Neighborhood Alliance. We've had multiple emails from both sides, you know, asking questions about it. So we knew that we wouldn't address all their, we couldn't address all their concerns, but you know, these are proposals that should address most of their, are their main concerns.
Okay.
I think you'll hear that they still have some concerns.
All right. We have a number of people that have signed up to speak. It is possible that upon looking at this document, your concern has been addressed. And if that's the case, and you no longer wish to speak, just simply say so when I call out your name. Each person will have three minutes to speak. Mary Berry?
I'm Mary.
Okay. Darla Cheek?
I'm Darla Cheek. I live at 2621 Southeast 95th. I am the Government Affairs Director for the Oklahoma City Metropolitan Association of Realtors. I would like to state that we have been working with city staff on this ordinance, and I do feel that there are some questions that we have not received answers to and things that are still very fuzzy that we would like to see addressed before this gets approved. The real estate industry understands how important abandoned and neglected properties negatively affect neighborhood values and the ability to sell or buy homes. By defining the term vacant so broadly, this ordinance goes way beyond the scope of protecting private property rights and will in fact have negative unintended consequences. We do not support this ordinance when it affects law-abiding citizens that maintain vacant properties. They secure their properties, and they have no code violations. I have received numerous phone calls from investors who have stated that if this passes today, they will quit purchasing rental homes in Oklahoma City. That will desecrantly hurt our real estate market. The ordinance should provide standards to guide the staff into determining when the visual assessment should be conducted. It merely states that the staff may conduct up to one visual assessment a month at a $190 fee. In the absence of such guidance, determining when visual assessments should occur is left to the broad discretion of the staff. This provides the opportunity for inconsistency and unfair application of the ordinance. Since the vacant abandoned registry is a public record, I worry about crime being centered on those vacant properties, since it'll be made public, such as stealing copper and air compressors. There's also several key definitions in the ordinance that I think need some definition. We were told by staff that some of these terms will be defined in the administrative process. We feel that it needs to be in the ordinance, so there is no doubt, once you all are not in your seats and someone else is sitting there, about what you all had intended for this ordinance. A couple of the terms that we would like addressed and put in the ordinance are actively marketing. If you have a property and it's being actively marketed, what does that mean? And I feel that needs to be defined. Timeline for occupancy, owners, there's multiple owners in some situations, especially on foreclosed homes. The violations need to be further defined. You could be, if a house is vacant for 30 days, should it be on the registry? Or do we wait until 60 days after the electricity or water are cut off? Is it 30 or 90? I think it needs to be addressed and cleared up. I'm asking today that you defer this action until we continue having meetings and addressing some of these current concerns and involving the real estate industry in those concerns. I do appreciate the staff meeting with us and you all hearing us out on this issue and making a couple of our changes on the commercial side. But I feel the residential side, 30 days, is just not acceptable either. Thank you.
Thanks, Darla. Deborah Burian?
Oklahoma.
Okay. Mary Schnorberg?
Oklahoma.
Bart Benning?
I'm Bart Benning, 4101 Northwest 122nd and Ward eight. I'm on the Finance Committee for Oakmar, which is the Oklahoma City Metropolitan Association of Realtors. We've got over 4,100 members in the metro area. I'm a member and former chair of Realtors Commercial Alliance of the Oklahoma Association of Realtors. I serve on several committees for both Oklahoma and National Association of Realtors. For the past two years, we have been promoting meetings with staff, Oklahoma City staff, concerning this issue. And we have been approaching those luncheons as a problem-solving thing, making suggestions for the city staff on how to end up addressing this problem. We agree that there is a problem with abandoned and neglected properties. And again, we've tried to end up making, you know, suggestions on how to handle that. However, when we offered to end up providing input on the development of the code of the ordinance that's being, that was presented a few weeks ago, we were told that that wasn't going to happen, that we'd see what the code was when it was introduced to council. And I think that was unfortunate, because had we been able to provide input into that code creation, I think a lot of these controversies that we're having today wouldn't be around, could have been avoided. And there are several unintended consequences that we've identified, and those could have been avoided also. As Realtors, we are one of the oldest recognized professions around. Oakmar was founded in 1903. The National Association of Realtors have a Code of Ethics that was started in 1913. And I want to read the preamble for this Code of Ethics. It says, "Under all is the land. Upon its wise utilization and widely allocated ownership depends the survival and growth of free institutions and of our civilization." Goes on to say that Realtors need to be experts in their field and need to end up advising the appropriate regulatory bodies on how to eliminate practices that will end up adversely damaging the public. We had our land attorneys at the National Association of Realtors look at the original ordinance, not the one that has the commercial considerations, you know, we agreed on some commercial considerations. We received an eight-page report from them on Friday that had addressed a number of unintended consequences that we missed when we locally went through this thing. One of them, it's a good thing here, sort of, it has an affirmative defense provision that requires, that allows a six-month continuance if a person is in the hospital, is on military leave, things like that. This applies only to the owners of the property, not tenants. And there are cases where some military people might be a tenant on a building, have, you know, deployment abroad, they don't want to end up giving up the lease on the building. But under this ordinance, if it's a house and they decide to turn off the electricity and they're gone for more than six months?
Okay.
That's a bad deal. In fact, they can't be gone at all. The ordinance also states that each day a violation continues shall be deemed a separate offense, which means that an owner who has four days past due on a payment has a Class B offense against the city, which is punishable by a fine not to exceed $750 and/or six months in jail.
Bart, you've exceeded your time. Do you want, you can wrap it up if you'd like.
Let me tell you just one other thing about the way ownership is defined in this ordinance. It seems to include the concept of owner in possession, which may include a mortgagie in possession, a mortgageor in possession, the assigning of rents, receivers, an executor, an administrator, a trustee, or in some cases even a tenant. Okay? The way the ordinance is written, there is joint and sever liability among these various classes of owners, which in the extreme could mean.
Bart, I've got a lot of people that really want to speak. I appreciate you coming.
Well, it means that a tenant, if an owner of a building has not paid the fees and is more than four days late in something, a tenant could end up being fined and end up going to jail for that. Now, these unintended consequences are something.
Bart, I'd really love to listen to you, but we've got to move on. Thank you.
Well. Could you read to him this whole one of us to give him all three minutes?
It doesn't work that way. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Pam Barton-Stober?
I live at 11113 Burning Oaks in Ward four of Oklahoma City. I spoke to you all from this podium before about this and bring to you a question. You have ordinance in place that require lawns to be mowed, and if those lawns are not mowed, it's my understanding the city can take on that and correct that issue and abate that. Is that correct?
With process, yes.
Okay, with process. They can also do the same with trash, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. My question on this is, you're requiring, per this ordinance, for property to be registered. You're not correcting the problem. The boarded-up houses are still sitting there. It's still affecting the condition in the neighborhood. I brought to you before the opportunity to go in, create an ordinance that will require these things to be removed from the property, windows to be put in place, the property to be repaired, and take that approach to cleaning up the neighborhoods. In doing that, you're going to fix your problem. Property values will increase. You can fine if they don't do what you prepare for them to do in that, in taking the window boards off. You can fine them. You can go through the same process that you do for grass and rubbish. It cleans up the neighborhoods. It eliminates your problem. This does not eliminate your problem. All you're doing is collecting revenue for the city, creating a base of information of vacant property for thieves to access, for homes to be vandalized, air conditioners to be gone, copper to be removed, more work for your police department, your fire departments, and more damage in your areas. So I would hope that you would consider that. I brought a reference ordinance for you all to look at. It's the same thing. It's the same line. Clean up the problem. You're not doing anything by the ordinance you've created. You're not making any process in the 12,000 properties you've identified. Move forward. Push those people to clean them up or do something with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Georgie Rasko?
Georgie Rasko, 1236 Northwest 36th Street in Oklahoma City. Excuse me. I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Alliance. We represent over 420 different neighborhood associations in the Oklahoma City area. I want to commend Bob Tina and his staff, the city council. I've found the staff to be remarkable in the last two weeks, really working hard at meeting with citizens, meeting with groups, talking with people, answering emails. Lots of has gone on behind the scenes to get, the scenes to get where we're at today. Neighborhood associations that we've talked with are very supportive of the changes that are being recommended today and supportive of you passing this ordinance with the changes that have been recommended by Bob Tina and his staff. A couple of the things that were disappointing, but nonetheless still supportive of the ordinance, is that we do wish that industrial was included, and at some point, that might be something to look at down the line. Also, there was a lot of feeling on the going to 12 months for commercial to be registered. But it was also the feeling of neighborhoods that that was a compromise that they were willing to accept, because knowing that it was difficult to, for commercial, to get the needs done in the 30 days that they'd originally put on there. So thank you very much for considering the changes, and thank you for listening to the needs of neighborhoods and to residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Coats?
My name is Betty Coats. I live at 2601 North Hudson Avenue. I work with Jefferson Park on the rehabilitation and Uptown 23rd. And vacant properties have been a huge problem for us in our efforts to revitalize my area along 23rd Street. The study accurately documented our problems, putting actual dollar numbers on the losses. Now we have a well-written ordinance that addresses this. I feel strongly that the ordinance must cover both commercial and residential properties to have the greatest success. While residential properties are the heart of our neighborhoods, the commercial properties bordering our neighborhoods are the face of our neighborhoods, the image that resides in the minds of others as they enter or remember. We need this ordinance so badly, covering both residential and commercial properties in order to prevent the decay of useful properties, to prevent depressed values of surrounding properties, and to save untold dollars in cost to the city. I believe that delaying the vote will only benefit those special interest groups that are opposed to the ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Betty. Sue Jones?
My name is Sue Jones. I live at 1804 Kendall Place, and that is Oklahoma City, by the way. Some people think it's Yukon. I own all-phase real estate. My office is at 1611 North Broadway. I represent five investment groups that own apartment communities in the Oklahoma City area, 19 individual owners that have invested their retirement in houses and duplexes, and an older couple who have invested all of their retirement into an apartment community. I am past president and current board member of the Apartment Association of Central Oklahoma. I'm on the metropolitan, I'm a member of the Metropolitan Association of Realtors. I am on a homeowners association, and I'm a member of my neighborhood association. I have spoken to many people in the last week, because I found out about this on the 27th of November, regarding this issue. Of all of the people that I have spoken to, only one of the private owners had heard anything about this. And all of the people that I've spoken to, including members and people that are my neighbors and on this neighborhood association with me, were opposed to this action. And the reasons that they were opposed to the actions are because of the way that it is written. There are things about it that are not exact enough. We also disagree with the fees. We believe that because code enforcement, according to what was established earlier in the codes, is in charge of doing this and inspecting these buildings, there's already the mechanism in place to do this. Because the city budget does not have the funds available to tear buildings down, there is no end to this action. You can go in and you can fine people, but what is the result of it? The result needs to be changed so that you have the money to tear down buildings that need to be torn down so that you can clean up the neighborhoods. Continuously boarding these up and continuously having another registry will cause property values to go down. As they've stated before, the crime will go up. Another thing about this is the fact that because you already have the mechanism in place to identify the owners of these properties through the county assessors website, you do not need another registry that would cause a problem. Additionally, the funds that you're going to collect to do this will result in five new inspectors, six new support staff, and of that, the first year, you intend to do 6,000 inspections. That equals 500 a month. You break that down between your people doing the work, and they're going to inspect five houses a day. Your current staff members do more than that. We just disagree with this. We just disagree with this completely. We believe that there is a reason to tear down dilapidated structures. We agree with that completely. We do not believe that this addresses that, and we do not believe that we've had enough time to work with the staff that has the authority and the right to go ahead and tear these buildings down. That, to me, is the result that needs to be addressed, is having the money to tear the buildings down, not finding the property owner. And just so that I may finish this up.
Please wrap it up.
When you find a property owner with more taxes, fees, and dues, what you're actually doing is hurting the lower end of our economic tower because people who cannot afford to go to the higher-end properties and pay $1,700 a month for rent are going to be the ones, if an owner has 10 houses-
I think we understand your point. Thank you.
All right.
Kenna Hoffman-Taze.
Thank you, sir. I am Kenna Hoffman-Taze. I live at 7812 Ridgeway Road in northeast Oklahoma City. My office is at 9,500 West Gate Road in northwest Oklahoma City. I have been a real estate broker for approximately 35 years. I have sold, I have owned a Remax office. I now have an independent brokerage. I cannot tell you how appalled I was at this ordinance when we learned of it just before Thanksgiving, that, as previously stated, we have already on the books laws about abandoned property, vacant property. It seems to me that this ordinance is saying, okay, if you own a property, it has to be occupied, period. That doesn't seem constitutional. If you own a property and you're doing property management, your renter could be 30 days behind in his rent, have been paying on it, the house could be vacant in your terms with utilities off, before you even know it, the 30 days is gone. I think we've heard from both sides that there's still a lot of discussion needed on this, that the community alliance isn't happy with the 12 months on commercial. I'm a residential broker. I've been, as I said, selling houses, owning brokerage, real estate brokerage, for 35 years, and this, my income depends on the economy in Oklahoma City. This is going to really hurt the economy in Oklahoma City. Investors are not going to want to own property. It's going to be too much trouble. I've spoken with everybody I could think of in the last few days since Thanksgiving that owns property that I've sold property to. Nobody even knows about this. I think we definitely need to defer until we can have more conversation. I totally agree that vacant and abandoned properties are bad for property values. That's very important to me, property values, resale values, but this ordinance is not going to solve that problem. I think it needs a lot more discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Grisham.
My name is Pat Grisham. I reside at 10701 White Hall Boulevard, Oklahoma City. That's 73162. And I just learned of this last night, and I sympathize with property owners who don't like to have the abandoned buildings or dilapidated homes in their neighborhoods. I totally sympathize with that. As a property owner of 17 rental properties, however, I find this, these fees and things to be very punitive. I have mortgages on every one of my rental properties, which means that I need someone in there paying the rent so that I can pay my mortgage. And my properties stay rented most of the time, but I, just like right now, we have one that's vacant, that we are doing work on. We had to go in and put in new carpet, put in, you know, repaint and all that. And sometimes that takes more than 30 days. And I don't believe, I may be wrong about this, but I don't believe that requires having a building permit or whatever, since we're not doing any construction. But this just, this seems like it's being rushed and needs, I think it needs to be deferred.
Right. Thank you. David DeWitt.
Hi, good morning, council. My name is David DeWitt. I reside at 901 Northwest 22nd Street, Apartment B, 73106, Ward 6. I am the president of Mesa Park Neighborhood Association. We applaud Oklahoma City for this effort to manage vacant and abandoned buildings. VABs are some of the worst offenders for external property maintenance, which can entice illegal occupancy and criminal activity, and may also initiate other social ailments, all listed in the legislative findings portion of the ordinance. From the experience of my neighborhood and its peers, poorly maintained VABs, as well as poorly maintained unoccupied or even occupied buildings, can be a significant accelerant for the decline of a neighborhood or an impedance to its resurgence. Isor and feared properties can discourage home buyers and remodelers from, and remodeling investors from purchasing nearby, especially if they have no faith that the city will reverse the decline in the deteriorating property. The parallel detriment is existing homeowners' property values decline, and this may discourage them from maintaining and improving their property. The cycle continues, and the blight and social ailments begin. In the core of the city, most neighborhoods are bordered by commercial buildings. These buildings are the face or foyer of our neighborhoods. For this VAB program to slow and reverse the detriments of VAB residential buildings, then commercial properties also need to be addressed. There are many people in this room that are opposed to this ordinance, citing undue burden on property owners, but I point out that this program only targets foreclosed buildings, empty dilapidated buildings declared by the city engineer, and empty buildings with no water or electricity. And if the owner is working to restore the building, then the building is excused for six months, and by that time, the structure would likely have electricity or, and/or water connected. The conditions to avoid being on the vacant and a building registry are not extreme, and if people think that they are, then it would provide an incentive for them to maintain, improve, or have their building occupied. And it discourages people from buying properties and sitting on them, allowing them to deteriorate and waiting for everything else to improve around them and be the last person to change. I will concur with some of the people that have said there should be improvements made. I think that marketing could be defined better, as well as not currently occupied, that those could be definitions that could be abused as a loophole. Lastly, I just want to thank you, as a representative of Mesa Park and a resident of Oklahoma City, I implore you to please pass this ordinance and fix these broken windows.
Thank you. Representative Kay Floyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. It's good to see everybody again. I am Kay Floyd, representing Oklahoma House of Representatives, District 88. That's midtown, uptown Oklahoma City. And I'm here today speaking on behalf of many constituents that have contacted me regarding this issue. Two weeks ago, Councilwoman Salyer said that the point and purpose of public hearing was to allow the council to see and hear from people regarding various points of view on a certain issue. And as a result of that public hearing, which served its purpose, and a meeting was ordered by this council a few days after that, again, public hearing was taken, excuse me, public input was taken in front of city staff, and as a result of that additional input, today we have seven changes or clarifications to the ordinance. So the public hearing process does work, and it has worked. We have compromises that have been discussed and compromises that have been made. Commercial business now has 12 months. Rehabilitation properties now have six months. And the 30-day period still remains in place for residential. I recognize and remember that Councilman Ward, excuse me, Councilman Ryan, believed that we needed a better ordinance, and I think that's what the council sees today. So again, my constituents would urge that you please accept this ordinance, and it's a first step. It may need to be tweaked. I think it's, would be very, very rare to get a law or an ordinance through the first time that didn't need changes made as the process moves forward. But it's time to move the process forward. Thank you very much.
Marie Love.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm Marie Low, 148th Street, Oklahoma City. I have not heard several things that were not addressed. I do think that you're here with a lot of responsibility, and I think that responsibility many, many times is dictated by old-fashioned common sense. I think that there's been a lot of issues that have been raised that have not been addressed, and I think that that, I'm asking you to keep that foremost in your mind as you go through this decision process. I have not seen tornadoes as an exception in this. And I'm talking about people. I also seem to remember, and I could be wrong, perhaps y'all could help me, but it seems to me in the past year or two, I remember reading in Vernon Civil Statutes where there was a law that was passed that allowed municipalities to purchase property. And I'm wondering if this would have any effect upon that particular state law. Next thing, and I didn't know about this till a few minutes ago, and so you see me in paint clothes and with paint. People are legally allowed to have residences in two states. I know some people that turn off the utilities routinely and go elsewhere from time to time. I have had my ribs personally injured, and for three weeks I was not able to work. I have rental property. Had I had this already passed, I would have to pay $285 because I have been incapacitated, and I am not in a hospital. I really deeply take offense to that, if you don't mind my saying so. In rental property, I can assure you, if you do not have something rented by the end of October, October through January, you may consistently have something set vacant. I do from time to time. I do not consider my property abandoned, and I would deeply be offended by this city if I had to pay $285 for the way I run my business. I also take note that if no electricity or water is on, do you actually consider requiring people to have a registry of their electric bills because they own a residence in Oklahoma City? That's scary. You also, I want to say something else, and this is really important. In all government, we have the right to say no to something, and government has the right to come back until they get us to say yes. After we say yes one time, we have no right to say no. It is a forever deal. Keep in mind that the decision you make, we have no right to say no to. Do not make it in haste. I'm going to tell you just a little bit about my background. When I was 21, I was in charge of accounting for 21 companies in five states. I've been in charge of worldwide traffic management for e-systems at one point in time.
Marie, you've exceeded your time. Is there, you have a final comment you want to make?
Okay. Final comment is, there's too many issues that too many people have brought up that have not been addressed. I beg of you, don't say yes and make us permanently not able to say no to something that has clearly not everything been addressed. Please.
Kathy Nieswanger. Okay. Shannon Rundell.
Shannon Rundell, 431 Northwest 20th. And I'm here really representing the nine historic preservation districts. We formed an alliance, and the, you know, overwhelming consensus of that group and the neighborhoods, the nine that are in the alliance, are all very much in favor of this because we are mostly inner-city neighborhoods who have fought this problem for years in our both commercial and residential areas. I am also a member of the Oklahoma City Metropolitan Board of Realtors, and I have sold homes and businesses for 32 years. And I've watched this problem get worse through the years. I've watched the same houses be vacant, and the investor landlords do nothing. I think that it is short-sighted on the part of the realtors, who are the investors and own the rental property, to not recognize that we've got to change this, or our areas are just going to go down more and more. Anyway, I'm just here to represent the areas that we are wholeheartedly in favor of this, including residential and commercial. Thank you.
Thanks. Marva Ellard.
Marva Ellard, 1521 North Chertel. We own property in Midtown, Heritage Hills, Mesa Park, and Passayo. And we've owned property in many of those areas when they were not considered the hotspots of Oklahoma City. And we've also owned property that would probably be subject to this registry at times when we first bought it, and it was vacant and dilapidated and uninhabitable. But I would be happy to participate in a registry and be happy to participate in this ordinance to whatever extent we would need to, because this ordinance is a huge step in helping other areas in the city that need it. Let's look at 16th and MacArthur. Let's look at 34th and Portland with strip shopping centers, vacant apartment buildings. What's happening to those people's property values? And so there are good property owners, and there are bad property owners, and I don't see this ordinance as punitive to the good property owners at all. I'd like to thank Russell Klaus and his staff for their three years of hard work on this ordinance. I look forward to working with Bob Teener and his people on the implementation of this ordinance, and I ask that you all vote to pass this ordinance today. Thank you.
Jim Perick.
Jim Perick, 13729 Hillahay Drive. I am appreciative to get up here before the chicken discussion, so thank you for that. I, as you know, spoke against the ordinance previously, and I just wanted to come up and say that I'm very supportive of any efforts to deal with owners who do not take care of their properties. As it relates to commercial properties, which was my concern previously, I believe that the changes recommended by the staff deal with the majority of those concerns. I want to say I'm thankful to Bob Teener and his group for being attentive to our discussions. Councilman Greenwell and Councilman Salyer, I know we had some discussions, and thank you for your time and attention. And Jim, appreciate your time as well. So with those changes, I'm supportive of the ordinance and appreciate your time on this. Thank you.
Jessica Thompson.
Hi, my name is Jessica Thompson. I live at 1414 Northwest 14th Street. I am a secretary of Class and Ten Pin Neighborhood Association, and I also serve on the board floor positively Passayo. I am representing our neighborhood today. We have had some discussions, and we are a part of the SNI program where there is a lot of rehab work going on in our neighborhood, which is great. But with the discussion at one of our meetings, the neighbors talked about having inclusions to this ordinance, inclusions regarding that homes that are being rehabbed, they tend to take over 30 days to be rehabbed, and some kind of inclusion to address that, as well as properties that are in good repair, where people are maintaining them, mowing the lawns, no chip paint, et cetera, but some kind of inclusion to address those people as well. We would, Oklahoma City is great, and we do, we are setting- Oklahoma City is great, and we are setting an example with other cities, and I think that we should look at the possibility of reviewing some inclusions before this is being passed. So, thank you for your time.
All right. That completes our list. I'm sure there's council comments forthcoming.
Excuse me, Your Honor. I think there's been an honest effort to accommodate all the concerns we have, and no ordinance that we present to the council has ever been perfect. And I think this is a good ordinance. It does what we want it to do. It addresses a serious problem. Can it be revised or changed if we go forward? Yes, it can. And I think we've made some major changes that have accommodated some of the concerns, particularly our commercial question. And I would be in favor of the ordinance.
Okay. Meg?
Yeah, I just, I really would like to thank everybody for coming down again today. You know, this is two weeks in a row that you've taken time out of your busy days to come join us and share your comments. I concur with Councilman Ryan. I really want to thank Bob Teener and his staff for meeting with their group. You know, I think we've come a long way. And again, it isn't perfect, but I think we've made great strides. I think this does a tremendous amount as a first step, as Representative Floyd said, in really giving us some teeth to help deal with a serious problem in this community. So I'm very supportive and hope we'll be able to pass the ordinance today.
All right. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do appreciate the staff and city manager working with members of the real estate community to address their needs. And I have a question based upon some of the comments that were raised this morning. And the question is, could we come up with a better defined, a better definition for items such as being actively marketed, not currently occupied? And then the final comments that were just rendered as far as what happens with property that's currently being rehabbed that may take over 30 days and then property in good standing? Can we address those within a relatively short period of time as far as providing a better definition?
Councilman Greenwell, Mayor and Counsel Cindy Richard with the Municipal Counselors' Yes, we could put more stringents in exacting definitions on those things, but let me explain why we haven't. When you don't include a definition inside a piece of law, then it reverts to its common usage. So basically, you look in a dictionary. What we've done here is used occupied in a very generic way so that there are a number of ways for folks to come forward and say, it's not unoccupied. Also, on the actively marketing, we didn't define that term more closely. Number one, it's provided as an affirmative defense. So it's available for folks to bring forward and say, here's how I'm marketing my property. And it gives them actually a bit of a wider berth than if we were to provide exacting definitions. So yes, we can define it more closely if that's what council indicates that it wants, but those are the reasons we haven't.
No, thanks, Mrs. Richards. No, I think that's a great point of information that we need to bring out, that it actually provides greater flexibility for the property owners to use as a defense. And I do appreciate you making those comments, and just knowing how the staff has been working with the real estate community over the past several weeks, that should give everybody confidence that they'll continue, as we move forward, to work in an agreeable manner. So I too support this measure.
I too am going to be supportive of this. The, one thing I'd like for people to realize is that most every ordinance we pass is a work in progress in one sense or another. And if there are problems that arise in this ordinance, I think you've got the commitment of this council to fix those things. I think, I appreciate all the hard work that went in on behalf of everybody that has been involved in this over the last couple of weeks especially, to try to address the things that are most prominent concerns. But we can't wait until we have an ordinance that everybody's happy with, because that is not going to be ever possible. There are those of you that spoke today that are not in favor of doing anything about this. I mean, it becomes very clear that some people don't think, they think any ordinance of this kind is an intrusion on their ability to do whatever they want to do. And I don't think, I think the impact of vacant and abandoned dilapidated housing on Oklahoma City is so large, it's so, both in a, from a dollar standpoint and in a sense of well-being standpoint, that this council and those of the people that have urged us to do this are really just trying to solve that problem. This is not, this is not intended to be punitive. It's not intended to be a fundraiser. That's just, that is totally off the page as far as I'm concerned. We could somehow rather do away with vacant and abandoned houses and have no staff that had to monitor it. We'd all be happier. This is really just an effort to cure a problem that we've not found another way to fix. And so, that, I understand that there are people that won't agree with that, but that being said, I'm going to be supportive of it today.
Larry? Larry? No, go ahead.
I have a point of information.
I'll give you a chance in a few minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me start off prefacing my comments by saying this. I think what we're dealing with here is a attempt to balance individual property rights and responsible property operations. We're trying to, and we wish we didn't have to do this, wish everybody would maintain their property in a state that it could be returned back to a productive use, and this would not be needed. It's my understanding, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first step only of a process to eliminate vacant and abandoned buildings. There are two more stages down planned in the future. The second one requires state action before we can take. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is the first phase of the three-phase program.
So those people...
If the council decides to go that far, we may run this program. We might decide this is all we need to do. But there's decisions to be made in the future.
This really, and when I look at it, people have said this is not going to solve the problem. I agree, all right? But this is a necessary, I believe, first step to getting to a solution, should we want to continue down this path, because something has to be done. I just have two scenarios. I wish somebody could give me an answer on, okay? I have a house, and I'm going to move out of state, and I want this house sold. And so, I take my furniture out of the house, I get a real estate agent, and I say, please put my property up for sale, and I go off to South Carolina and buy another house, and the property is not sold. After 30 days, do I have to have that registered?
The 30 days kicks in after one of the three conditions are met. So, once the water's been off, water and electric's been off for 60 days, then you have 30 days to register. Or the other two are, one's about foreclosure, the other, if it's been declared dilapidated or unsecured by the council. If that happens, then you have 30 days to register. So for your, in your situation, you would have 60 days after you shut the power and the water off to register. So basically, a 90-day window there.
Okay. I can't recall, the last time I moved was over 40 years ago. I can't recall whether I shut the power off or not. And most times, I think you don't, is what I'm hearing. So I would never have to register that piece of property under that scenario I just painted, if I leave the water and electricity on.
That's correct, Councilman.
And the house is in good repair.
And if you did shut off the water or electric, 60 days later, that would be the triggering effect that would cause a 30-day requirement to register. But in your scenario, you were talking about that you had a realtor and were putting it on the market. So there's also a six-month provision for active marketing before you'd ever have to register.
Okay. So I think, I use this as an example to say that I think there's quite a bit of misunderstanding, maybe. Is the total plan on the website, the three stages on the website, what people could look at, this being step one?
It's not at this time. There is a link to the study that covers the three phases, but we can make that available, but it's not out there right now.
My suggestion would be that link be made available, because I think if you knew that the total, where we're trying to go, the vision, and that balancing responsible ownership and property rights, and trying to address a problem that is impacting us all fiscally or financially, I think you all might have a little different opinion and go forward. So I'm in favor of going forward, because I've stated from the beginning that we've got to get a handle on this vacant property situation. Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Ed?
I would echo all the comments that have been made around the horse sheet. I would ask maybe that we, I think it's the 30 days that does cause some heartburn, and maybe if we could clarify in putting on the website that it's, we're saying 30 days of becoming vacant. I like the way you said it, 30 days after one of these three conditions is triggered, which would mean that the minimum would be 90 days, not 30 days. I do also want to emphasize, I appreciate Representative Floyd being here and just acknowledging that so much of the solutions to these problems really lie at the state level, and we're doing what we can do at the city level. But I would encourage everyone who's here and has taken the time out, who cares about this issue, to talk to your state legislator and get more definitive action taken at the state level. I think part of the problem is that, you know, this is still a good environment to invest in real estate. The real estate market is strong. We have some of the lowest property taxes in the country. And in fact, I think part of the problem is that the property taxes on these vacant abandoned properties are artificially low. For them to be $100 and something dollars a year is just allowing people to sit on them, and I think this, there's some distance in equilibrating that to fair market. So I would be supportive as well. Thank you.
Jay?
I'm in support also. Larry stole a lot of my thunder, what I was going to say, but when this first was introduced, I told Jim, Bob, and Russell that this is probably the most exciting thing that I've ever seen on the city, on the agenda since I've been on the council. And so, the word that I keep attaching myself to with this is disincentive, is that this creates a disincentive. It's not going to fix the problem, but it does create a disincentive, and so it is that first step to actually alleviating the problem. And so, everything else that I was going to say has already been said, so I just echo what everybody else has said. Oh, no, the other thing, I do, I do agree with the active marketing. It does need eventually to be defined, I think. Not, I think the explanation that Ms. Richards gave was a good one for now, but I think through the administrative process, if we can kind of gather what the actual definition needs to be, then we can add that later, so.
Okay. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ward 6 and Ward 7 has the most vacant and abandoned properties in our city, and I do believe we must do something about it. I hope that the Real Estate Association, the Neighborhood Alliance, and city staff can continue working out some of the differences, because this may not be perfect-perfect, and of course, more work definitely, I believe, need to be done, but I really hope the Real Estate Association, Neighborhood Alliance, and city staff can continue to work on this, because this is a work in progress. Across the street from me, I have a vacant and abandoned house that's been vacant and abandoned for a good, probably 30-something years. It's painted bright white, and the owner just stores his junk in. He has never tried to sell his property. He just wanted to store his junk. Two-and-a-half-story house. So I live where there's a lot of vacant and abandoned property. So I do believe that this is a good step in the right direction, and I just hope that the meetings continue between the Alliance and the Association, the city staff, to continue working on this policy issue.
All right. Any other comments from council? Do you want to say something? I'll give you an opportunity. I think we're going to need to go forward.
I have a point of information on the actively marketing. I think you're just going to create a situation, everybody's going to put a sign in the yard, put some enormous price on it, and say they're actively marketing. I think it's a huge loophole in this that should be considered. I want some clarification on that. My other question, a point of information, is how are you all going to collect these fees if they don't pay them? That's my question.
Part of the ordinance that you have in front of you includes a criminal penalty, which creates stages of violations for a failure to pay your registration fee or a failure to actually register the property. The first offense, if you're cited, is $119. Second offense is $269. Third offense is $519. A fourth offense or more is a Class B offense, which can be up to $1,200 and/or six months in jail.
My question is...
Her question was, how are we going to collect it? I mean...
Collect it if it's not paid, is that...
That's my question. Doesn't that require state action?
No, it would be a small claims case right now.
So it's going to cost you in court to collect it? Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's going to wind up costing you more in the long run? That's the point I want to make. You've still got some loopholes. That was, that was my information.
Okay. All right, we need a motion from council.
Second.
All right. All right, one more thing, and then we're going to vote.
We came here today with the understanding that this was probably a pretty much done deal, but we just want to impress upon you that this needs to be cleaned up and some language changed. Personally, as a property management company, the language in there that says "an owner means a person or firm or corporation in control of the premises," that puts me personally liable for this jail time that she's talking about and these fines if my owners choose to not allow me to register their property. I need that, we just would think about cleaning that up.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We're going to move forward with item 8E. This is the second time this has been in front of the council, and this is a public hearing. It would clarify some of the language in our, in our PUDs. Is there anyone here today to speak on item 8E? All right, how about a motion to move this forward?
I've actually got a question.
Okay.
I, in, in one of the sections, it says it takes out to be developed for residential uses when calculating densities. It's in section 14200.2.2E. It's in section 14200.2.1. And I've asked JJ and he answered me, but I think I'd like it to be, you know, verbally explained to me. I might be able to understand it better because that doesn't seem to make sense if the PUD, if we're calculating densities, then density should be just, should be restricted to the tracks that are used for residential. It seems like because of the language taking that phrase out, it would do the whole PUD.
Aubrey Hammond, through the Planning Department. I do have a copy of that correspondence that JJ Chambliss worked on, on this issue, and what he recommended is that we change for residential use to be of a residential tract. That way, the gross density is just for the residential portion of that development. It's not calculating gross density for the entire PUD, which may contain commercial or industrial or other types of uses.
So it will include, when we're calculating densities, it'll include the entire tract that is meant for residential, so it'll include all the amenity areas and common areas?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, that answers my question.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Motion on item 8E to move it forward. Bill of motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8F is an item that's being introduced today and this is, provides some cleanup that gets in compliance with IRS regulations.
So Mayor, speaking of cleanup, there's a typo in the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph, second sentence. It says, "The recently issued tax guidance includes specific plan language to clarify that any adjustment of the defined benefits." We just need to lose adjustment in there.
Okay.
Bernice Hutton is here this morning just to give us a quick explanation of this ordinance.
Yes, this ordinance is a clarification of the section 415 limits, which prescribe by the Internal Revenue Service the maximum benefits that can be paid by a plan. What they're doing is saying if in any future years, the maximum benefit requirements that they allow a plan to pay lower, meaning a lower amount is prescribed based on interest rates or mortality tables, that a participant shall not be tied to that lower rate. It'll be whatever rate they accrued when they were working under maybe a higher table. That's just the clarification.
So let me ask if I understand that again. If an employee retires and has a benefit level...
Well, this is while you're working.
This is while you're working.
The 415 limits really don't apply to our plan because our, the city compensation structure here is not high enough to get us to a maximum benefit level. But if we were at that level, meaning a participant is working and the maximum benefit level's $100,000 for that year in 2016, well then 2017, the maximum benefit level went to $90,000 a year, then that means that participant would not be lowered, their benefit would not be lowered because they're now at a lower rate because the Internal Revenue Service lowered the maxims that could be accrued. But we are nowhere near paying the maximum benefit levels for any participant in our plan.
Okay, so essentially it sets a floor...
Correct.
...below which an employee won't go.
It sets the floor for each year, meaning it cannot go down once you actually, if you hit that level, if they lower it, you're set at the current level.
And you can be adjusted up?
It can only go up, correct.
But you can't be adjusted down below the level at which you are.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, this item is being introduced today. We've set a public hearing for December 17th that would be up for final adoption as scheduled on December 31st. Is there a motion to move it forward? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is another ordinance being introduced today. We'll be setting a public hearing for December 17th and it has to do with special events.
Exactly. Josh Ryan is here to explain that to us and he's got a short PowerPoint presentation.
Short, yes. Good morning, Mayor and Council. As Mr. Couch said, I'm Josh Ryan with Special Event Permitting with Public Information and Marketing, and I want to cover briefly the outdoor special events ordinance. I'm very happy to introduce this to you today and this is kind of a work in progress that we've put together with several different departments, including the Municipal Counselor's Office, Public Works, the Traffic Management Division, Police, Development Services, Planning, and Public Information. And we also enlisted help from contacts in the event community, including Downtown Oklahoma City, Inc. Jane Jenkins is here this morning. This introduction that you'll see today has actually been presented to several contacts in the event community in Oklahoma City. And also, some of the parts of it are things that we've been sharing with event organizers for over a year now that I've been in the position. We've been kind of saying that we're leaning toward making these sorts of changes, so we've been letting them know that these changes could possibly be coming. And just to provide you some indication of the number of permits this ordinance will affect, more than 475 permits were processed in the past year. The permits covered many activities from protests to film shoots, marathons, and cycling events. Almost 90 of those were revocable permits, the majority of which you saw here at council. The goals of the ordinance we'll cover briefly, we've never defined special events in an ordinance and this will help to eliminate some of the concerns in the event community that we're kind of arbitrarily deciding which permitting process an event will go through. And this is important so we can help event coordinators better understand the permits that they need to get for their events. Other goals of the ordinance, you see creating consistent rules and deadlines, introducing a fee schedule that doesn't exist yet, creating a permit and setting deadlines for free speech events. Up until now, those have been handled by right-of-way permits and we're going to separate them out and provide them with their own permit. And temporarily removing zoning restrictions on outdoor sales during permitted events. This is a big change, something that's been asked for, for a while from event coordinators. Many times, events will like to strictly operate on private property and this will give them a chance. And one example is the Plaza District. There is a very large parking lot they've tried to use for many years to have vendors on that lot. They haven't been able to do it because zoning, the zoning restricts outdoor sales in that area. They would like to move some of those vendors there and it could possibly free up some right-of-way closures that they have, the vendors would be moved off the street. As we move forward, looking at some of the types of public events that we've defined in the ordinance, you see there an outdoor special event. Really, that's what we're dealing with mostly with the entire ordinance, outdoor special events, but when we say it in this instance, it's held, it's events that are held on public or, excuse me, public events that are held on private property and that can include some of the examples you see, festivals, carnivals, markets. An example that I can give you is there are several motorcycle rallies that like to have stages and different types of vendors and things that operate on private property and they want to be able to do that without any street closures and then go have a motorcycle rally and then come back to that event site and that permit would be specifically just for that. There would be a 30-day deadline before their event to apply for that permit. Minor events, as you see, there are some examples, block parties, small festivals. Some things they're going to define and they're defined in the ordinance, minor events will be seen as one city block, 500 participants or less, and that's kind of an estimated number, but we're going to look at that participation level and say if they're in the area of 500 or less than 500, then they will be defined as a minor event and less than 24 hours and really no impact to city services. If they're needing, not needing a whole lot of police security or anything like that, that's how we'll consider that to be no impact to city services. And those will mainly be processed under another 30-day deadline is what they'll see and an administrative revocable permit is what they would receive to get their event permit. Major events are, those are the events that you're seeing me bring to you. Those are the big events, races, walks, parades, and large festivals. They'll be under a 75-day deadline and will still be processed under a revocable right-of-way use permit processed by the council. And then the First Amendment Assembly events will receive this new assembly permit. Those are the processions, protests, and vigils. These are events that are not blocking the right-of-way. Now, if a First Amendment event, a free speech event decides that they will be blocking the right-of-way, they will be processed as a revocable permit and the fees that you see on the next page will apply to those events. If they stay, if they do not block the right-of-way or if they operate on private property or something like that, there will be no cost for their permit. But if they do decide to block the streets, you'll see there, they will be processed under the outdoor special event permit. That's also our application fee. They'll see that $25 fee and then the revocable right-of-way use permit fee will also be charged to them. So minor events, revocable right-of-way use permit, the major events will also get the revocable right-of-way use permit. They'll see the application fee and the $75 fee to close the streets. And introducing also some of these newer fees that haven't been seen by events that operate in the street, these vendor fees that you see here, this is the schedule of fees for outdoor seller's permits. Up until this point, events with vendors have, that operate in the street, haven't had to pay for outdoor seller's permits. We're now applying those fees to vendors at street right-of-way events. That really summarizes a majority of what we've tried to cover in the special events ordinance. You may think it's a little confusing, there's a lot, yes, there are a lot of twists and turns to this, but we're covering that in a comprehensive special events guide, it's a 20-page-plus guide that will be posted online. That'll be the website where it will be posted, okc.gov/specialevents. They'll be able to get the guide there, they'll be able to make application there, they'll have downloadable forms for sample maps, anything that they need to be able to provide exhibits to us to get their revocable permit. We're going to provide a public event calendar there that's already started and has been tabulated and we've been compiling that for a while now and it just kind of gives them an idea of when events are going to be happening and so they can kind of plan ahead and say, well, I don't want to work on this weekend, I want to work on another weekend. And then of course, very important to event coordinators is contact listings. They want to know all the separate agencies, who do they contact to get all the different permits, like alcohol permits and things like that, that they need for their events. And I want to finish by saying, we want to encourage events in Oklahoma City and assist coordinators with the event. We do our best to strike that balance between what coordinators need and want and what the city can accommodate, but in the end, we need to ensure that the coordinators are organizing safe events and we feel these changes really help us to reach that goal. And I thank you for your time and I would welcome any questions.
Okay. Comments or questions for Josh from the council? Yeah, Pat?
Yes, sir. Recovering costs, it's something that we can look deeper into, but recovering costs with special events becomes a little bit difficult because a majority of the processing on this can vary between many of the events and it can be, it can differ between the maps that need to be created, the different types of permits that need to be looked into or processed, and a lot of that would be staff time, but it's definitely something that we can try to calculate for you if you want to see a number on that.
Mr. Ryan, there's been such an increase in the number of special events. I mean, you have to notice on the agendas that we have sometimes, you know, six, eight, 10 of them on a week where we never used to have that. So we're really becoming more and more and because of the volume, we're hoping they will, but we're going to have to see with the new ordinance and how that plays out. But that's our goal.
But we, you know, you should do fees and at the same time, make sure that the fees are being covered.
I understand that. That's our goal.
Meg?
Mayor, if I could, Josh, I just want to thank you so much. You've done a wonderful job through this process and I was reminded by Assistant City Manager Laura Johnson this morning that we started talking about this two years ago or more with the H and E debacle. Jane, you've been involved from the get-go and I think we've come such an incredibly long way, clarifying, making it easy for people to do. As you said, your mission is to encourage events in the city, but we want them to be safe and we want people to understand. So Councilman Greenwell and I were just talking about the lead time. I really compliment you for setting out a timeline that people have to come to us, you know, well in advance of an event so we can work on any quirks and details. I'm just so happy to receive this ordinance from you today and I have one little tip.
Okay.
And it comes from the Gazette Parade over Halloween and we've had a lot of trouble with some other events having parade marshals. And they require that every entry have their own volunteer marshal. And that person walks in front of their float in an identifiable, you know, costume with the name of the float so you know exactly what it is. And I think if, perhaps in our details on parades, I didn't see it in there, but if we could require that each entrant, you know, we know that the entry's registered previously and that each entrant have its own marshal, I think we'd go a long way in making some of these other parades a lot safer.
And that's actually something that, when I received that from the council office, I added that to our parade guidelines. It's actually in the new revised version of the special events guide.
Okay, so I didn't see it last night.
It was loaded after, I loaded this for council.
Great, well, thank you very much. I think that'll really help us.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just want to point out that Josh is really more than just administrator of this program, he's really become a liaison for people to come in to help them through the process on it. I really think that he's done a wonderful job since he's been in that position and has helped alleviate along with the OKC some of the problems we've had in the past.
Thank you.
Yes, Shay?
I just wanted to offer again my support and, for this ordinance and my kudos to Josh and his work and the entire city staff because it's, like the city manager says, this is more than just one single staff person developing this document. Many, many city departments were involved, many, many community organizations were involved in looking at this and trying to anticipate all the scenarios because just like the city manager said, the number of events, particularly in the downtown area, has increased exponentially and our system just didn't allow for that in a very expedient fashion and I think that this new system does and I think all of the staff, particularly Josh, is to be commended for their work.
Thank you. All right, how about a motion to move this forward? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And again, there'll be a public hearing on this December 17th. Final adoption is scheduled for December 31st.
Thank you very much.
We're now on to item 8H. This is the urban agriculture ordinance.
Mayor Russell Thausen is coming forward and as he does, I think I just want to remind council that society changes and we have to respond to those changes in society. A few weeks ago or a few months ago, I had no idea what Uber was and now we're working with staff to try to come up of how we're going to deal with Uber because it's upon us and we've got to deal with it in some way. A lot of the same things are within this ordinance. There are things that we didn't deal with in the past. I don't think I knew what a hoop house was two years ago. Composting is becoming more and more prevalent and so we need to have some rules to make sure that people aren't putting a compost facility right across, right next to your patio. More urban gardens are becoming, are becoming used, people have more concerns about that. Rainwater harvesting has always kind of been out there, but it's becoming more and more prevalent as we go forward. Rules, people, more people want to put up greenhouses and what are the rules for that? And there's just more things that we have to address. Some of these things we have addressed, some of the things we haven't addressed well and some of the things we just haven't addressed. Some of the things are not addressed out there. And so as we go forward, we're presenting an ordinance and I anticipate that there's going to be some discussion on this ordinance over the next six weeks or five weeks as we go forward on it. But one of the things I do want to point out, that there are policy issues to be had within this ordinance and I'm sure there will be good policy discussions. And I assume that with citizen input and the citizen input you've already received, that we may have some votes on some segments of this that may or may not be unanimous and that's okay as we go forward.
All right, Russell?
Don't think I have to say anything else. All right, so we're introducing the urban agriculture ordinance today and I did want to follow up on one of the previous conversations and to emphasize how much collaboration has gone into this particular effort between other city departments, as you can see there. I mean, we're taking the lead on this, but we work very closely with Development Services, with the Office of Sustainability, Municipal Counsel's Office, and Utilities Department. We've also spent a lot of time working with a lot of the primary stakeholders in this, the people who are, the local food movement, who are actively trying to be able to pursue what they consider to be important to them and their families and to the community as a whole. And this ordinance is about providing definitions and facilitating people being able to do So with that, there has been, as the city manager pointed out, a lot of growth and interest in people being able to grow their food themselves, to be able to harvest it and in some cases, to be able to sell it locally. We have become, I think, and this is a national trend, where we have become very efficient in the distribution of food, but there is now a reverse reversal of that process going on where people want to know where their food comes from, both for a nutritional purpose and for educational purposes. They want to be able to grow and eat their own food. So our ordinances, to a large degree, have not addressed that, at least at the urban density level. We permit urban agriculture in, obviously in the agriculturally zoned areas and in the larger parts of the city, but not so much in the urbanized area. So the intent is to facilitate that. And one of the other issues that we've... to enforce, and and a lot of this deals with definitions of uses and activities that are currently ongoing that we haven't code enforcement has not been able to deal with. So it's about providing more clarity, both for city staff, as as we try to ensure that community gardening in whatever scale or form is conducted in a way that supports what people are trying to do, but is also does not provide a nuisance factor to the rest of the community, which is always that tight balancing that we have to deal with virtually everything, because you're never going to make everybody happy, but we believe that there's that this goes a long way to ensuring that people know exactly what they can do, both at the city level and the community level. We did a lot of research on this. We took advice from our local community gardeners, but we also looked at a host of other cities to to see what they were doing in terms of community gardening. So we looked at what a home garden, and there are different scales here, and I'll get into the definitions in a minute, and the mayor, I mean, Jim had mentioned composting and rainwater harvesting, these are things that everybody used to do, and we're now seeing a lot more of that coming back. And these are the cities that we we looked at, and I don't have the statistics here, but I believe the a lot of these have NBA teams, and I know that was something that was brought up previously. So a lot of large cities are doing a lot more than we have done so far to facilitate community gardening activities. We also looked at what other cities are doing as far as chickens go, and that's probably the probably maybe the most controversial element of this. We looked at what they're doing in terms of the number of birds, and even in the local area, there's there's a variation in terms of how many birds you can keep, what the requirements are for keeping the birds outside, so setbacks on coops and the size of the coops and being able to provide access for chickens outdoors. That's been important. Virtually, everybody restricts roosters, very discriminatory to the male sector of this particular species, restrictions on slaughter, and and then including something about nuisance language in there, so that we've got something to respond to. So in terms of as a base on the result of that research, we've come up with a number of new definitions and then described our use units and standards for the application of the ordinance. And on the new definitions, we've defined agricultural product now, which is written pretty broadly so that it covers virtually any plants and crops or animal commodity that is grown or used for food, aquaponics and hydroponics, and in fact, we've had a couple of these come through the city council in the last couple of years, where people are practicing aquaponics in the urban area, people have been doing hydroponics for quite a while, and as we perhaps see more urban farms, then you're going to see more of that. And then there are also definitions about compost, and essentially, that relates to the the nuisance factor there. People should be able to compost, but not to a degree that's going to cause a problem for anybody else. So on the use units, we have included animal raising for chickens and only chickens at this point, so those may be kept for personal use. Composting, a home garden is essentially what you would conduct as a garden on your individual property, so there would be a house there associated with that. A community garden is something that would be operated by a group, a group that would grow and harvest products for group consumption, possible sale and donation, and it may or may not contain a house. And an urban farm is really a commercial use. It is a true farm for the sale of agricultural products. Roof gardens, we've seen fortunately, a number of those in the downtown area in recent times, none of those, I think, are being used to any great extent for agricultural purposes, but I've seen a number of other cities where they grow, you'll have a restaurant, and they'll grow particularly herbs up on the up on the roof, and it's a obviously easy access and and speaks to that accessibility to fresh food. So I know in the summer here, it's going to be a little hard growing agriculture on the roof, but we have some very successful urban farmers out there who do a a lot better job than I can in terms of being able to produce food product. And then we have the greenhouse, which is, I think we all know what a greenhouse is, but a hoop house is sort of the lesser version of that, so it's not as controlled in terms of the temperature, it's more of a a sort of temporary arrangement. And then rainwater harvesting, which we consider to be important, we're getting a lot more interest in this because it's a way of recycling the water that falls on the roof of your house or other buildings on the property, and enables you to use those for local use, and a lot of people prefer to to drink rainwater or to apply it to the garden, and I think that as we enter into dry conditions again, then you'll probably see more of that going forward. So with the chickens, what we're proposing, chickens are currently permitted on properties of one acre or more, and we're not changing any of the conditions for what is what is currently permitted on those lots in excess of one acre, but for this would be for urban lots, and this is a single standard, single-family lots, we would be proposing the allowing up to six hens with no roosters, and for those who aren't familiar with the biology of chickens, you don't need roosters to get eggs. We would also have shelter requirements, so there'll be something there for coops in terms of setbacks and the square footage requirements there. We're looking at four square feet per chicken, and then access to the outdoor area as well, and that would be contained area of eight square feet, would only be in the back or the side yard, and there would be no outdoor slaughter permitted. And for those who have heard all these horror stories about chickens, they do not actually look like this. They are enhanced chicken. You may know that I grew up on a chicken farm, and I survived that, and I'm not aware of any chicken deaths in recent times, so they do not look like this. All right, on composting, we're permitting that in the rear yard only, and we're putting in nuisance conditions there so that there are no pests or odors associated with with the compost. On gardens, those would be permitted, those are currently permitted in the front, side, or rear yard. So we're not changing the conditions. I think there's a little bit of confusion out in the community that we're now, this ordinance is permitting front yard gardens, and that is not the case, that is already the case and has been for a long period of time. So I'm not anticipating that you're going to see a great swath of people go out there and immediately plow up their front yards and put gardens. Again, most most neighborhoods have got one or two houses that will have a front garden. Some of them are ornamental, some of them are agricultural, but I'm not anticipating that there will be any change because it is the way it is right now. What we don't have are definitions to address what might what a front garden, front yard garden that may turn into a nuisance factor. So this is the change that's included in this ordinance. A community garden would require a contact information sign because it may or may not have a dwelling on the property. Therefore, if there's nobody there at any point in time, somebody wanted to make contact, then we would need to have some means of being able to do that. There are standards for an urban farm, which as I said before, is probably going to be primarily for commercial use, roof gardens, and then and then ensuring that we have no pests or weeds, which I think has been probably the main complaint that's been associated with the existing gardens that are out there. We also have use standards for the greenhouses and hoop houses, and these will be allowed in all types of gardens. They will not be permitted in the front yards. And then rainwater harvesting, some concern about this also being a factor where it may contribute to pests, and for that reason, they have to be covered and with an inlet screen. As we currently have it written, these would be prohibited in the front yards. This was a change that was requested by the Planning Commission, that they not be permitted in the front yard and not visible from the streets. What we're proposing, though, is that perhaps some allowance could be made for rainwater barrels. Those are being marketed by the Utilities Department now, and with stormwater as a way of diverting stormwater and collecting rainwater. I noticed they're on in they're for sale at Home Depot and Whole Foods and other places like that, and they have a way of being able to disguise these that is is pretty innocuous. So we believe that there's there's probably an opportunity to be able to permit these in the front yard up to a certain maximum. I think the majority of rain barrels are between 55 and 85 gallons, so we may look at if 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 it's something that you would like to see, allowing something in the front yard for rain barrels. And then that's it. So I'll be happy to answer any questions on that.
Okay. Questions from council on the ordinance that's being introduced today? We're going to have a public hearing on December 17th. We have a couple of people that have signed up, and I'm going to allow them to speak because there's just a couple of them. Yeah, Ed?
So this passed unanimously at the Planning Commission. There really wasn't any discussion about chickens. It was really focused on composting and...
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion about compost, because originally, the ordinance had a requirement for containment of of compost in there, and there was a discussion about what volume you should you should limit it to, and we felt that that would be too difficult to enforce. So basically, we're just allowing composting and and controlling that through the pest nuisance factor.
But that that's been eliminated, the the need for a...
Correct.
...container, and then on rainwater harvesting, you just you can't, it shall not be visible from any public way, from the street, basically. You can't have it on the side of your house.
Yeah, and and what we're saying is that if you put it in the front yard, you know, a normal house, you're basically losing half your water if you're not able to capture that water coming from the on the front side of the house, and people have mostly their ornamental gardens, at least in the front yard, so we wanted to provide for capacity for some minimal storage there, some minimal innocuous storage in the front yard, not the thousand-gallon tank in the front yard. That would have to go in the backyard and will be screened on the side or backyard, but not in the front yard. So we we thought that the suggestion for rain barrels in the front yard was a reasonable one.
So on the chickens, can you help me understand, because as you pointed out, we have we allow chickens in the city if you have more than an acre of land? We, what is the rational basis, or what is the argument, I mean, what was the rationale for coming up with one acre as the cutoff?
That precedes me. I I believe that was probably associated with the fact that you would have sufficient separation, that, you know, an acre was large enough to be able to contain a few chickens without causing concern to anybody. Now, there wasn't any, there wasn't any restriction there on roosters, and I don't know where most of the complaints come in on chickens, but I think the majority relate to roosters, and I don't know geographically where those are distributed, whether they're illegal chickens in the urban area or they're roosters in the in the more the less urbanized area. I don't know the breakdown on that.
Do you have any data that supports one acre as the threshold? Do you have any data from other cities?
I think it would have been an arbitrary determination.
Okay, I think that's...
An acre was large enough.
So it's arbitrary. It was arbitrarily, it was arbitrarily defined, and there's no empirical data that you know of that would support one acre as an important...
We didn't we didn't research that, but I wouldn't think so.
Okay. In in the next four weeks, can we look for other cities, any empirical data, anything in the literature that supports one acre being a rational basis for us to tell citizens, if you have 1.0 acres, you can have urban chickens, but if you have 0.99, you cannot? I just, I'd like to know...
If we can do that, I don't I don't know we'll find much.
And and that's what I need to know. If there is if there's no empirical data, then I'm going to, then I would assume that that's an arbitrary threshold.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
We'll do that.
Mayor, could I, a couple of questions, Russell, if I could, about the ag part and then chickens as a separate issue, if you don't mind. So let's talk about front yard gardens for just a second, and you say they're currently allowed, and let me use corn as an example. We have a current weed ordinance that says you can't have weeds taller than, is it 12 inches?
Well, yeah, 12 inches.
So how do we deal with corn?
Corn is a crop. It's part of a garden.
Okay, so it will be exempt from the regulations that cover weeds?
It would not be considered a weed, no.
Okay, so, all right. I read this last night, it's very complicated to understand. I have a ton of questions, and I actually would like somebody, Aubrey or somebody, if you could sit down and brief me, you know, go through the page by page, because I really was having some trouble understanding, but that helps clarify at least that part. And we have had issues in some of our neighborhoods where people have had front yard gardens that are full of weeds and look terribly uncounted, and we've received a lot of complaints about that. Do we now address that?
Yes, that's really the intent of the changes here, is to be able to put in those definitions of what weeds and a nuisance would be so that we can address that, because in the past, we didn't have anything, and there was it was a really arbitrary determination of what would constitute a weed or a or a ornamental plant or an agricultural plant, so this gives us better surety of this. There's still a sense of judgment in here, obviously, but it's a it's a lot better. This is why we spend so much time with Development Services, with their enforcement people, with Charles Lark and his group, because they are the ones who have been responding to all these calls for so long, and we wanted to know from them what they needed in the ordinance to be able to be effective in responding to the calls that they're receiving.
Well, I think I should have begun my comments by thanking you and all of the staff for taking this on. We had a conversation some months ago about the fact that a lot of these things already exist in our ordinances, and that we were trying to clarify, redefine, you know, help bring forward some of the things that people can already do that they were unaware that they could do. So I think you're going a long way. I would like to say that I am supportive of the decorative rain barrels, if we can include that language so that you can do some minimum collection upfront in a way that would not be offensive to your neighbors. I mean, I I think that makes a lot of sense. I was confused between chicken raising, and I'm not segueing into chickens yet, but I was confused about the difference between raising chickens and animal raising personal.
Well, I mean, you could do animal raising in the lots greater than an acre and or in the agriculturally-zoned areas. You couldn't do that at all in the areas with lots less than an acre. So the only change to that is to permit chickens.
Okay, so that acre...
Less than an acre.
Less than an acre, so you can't have a goat?
Can't have goats.
In your front yard, and that's probably helpful. And the compost question, I think the city manager answered for me, but it's even, I mean, it's not, doesn't need to be containered.
Correct.
But it cannot be in your front yard?
Correct.
That was, I had some trouble identifying those two separations, so maybe you can show me where that is. I think that's most of it, so let me move on to, and I guess now a question is, can you define what for me, what conditional mean, what does that C mean everywhere, where it says conditional?
The conditional is that you can have chickens, using chickens as the example, if you satisfy these certain conditions, would be the the size of the coop and the access to the backyard and no slaughtering and no roosters, et cetera.
Okay. So with regard to chickens, have you done the math? I mean, we're talking about whether an acre is arbitrary or not. Have you actually done the math to know what size lot you have to have in order to have the appropriate setbacks and four feet per chicken, and, you know, we have a lot of conditions here.
Yeah, I don't I don't know. I don't know we've done that minimum. I mean, most of our lots are 7,000 feet or greater. They would be, they would fit on those lots.
Depending on the size of the house?
Correct.
And if there's a garage?
Correct, yeah, obviously.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes into...
Yeah, and you may not be, that's why those conditions are in there. You may not be able to meet those conditions.
Okay, so it doesn't automatically grant that you can have chickens?
No, no.
You just, you have to be able to meet the conditions.
Correct.
So I I think my overriding question, and I'll just tell you a quick story. Georgie's here today, and Georgie and I were together on Sunday at a meeting in Heritage Hills, and we were specifically talking about vacant and abandoned buildings, but at the end of the meeting, Georgie asked if she could talk about chickens, and I, my comment was, I wasn't leaving until we had a chance to. And we were specifically talking about vacant and abandoned buildings. But at the end of the meeting, Georgie asked if she could talk about chickens, and I, my comment was, I wasn't leaving until we had a chance to talk about chickens. So I think there were about nine of us there. We had discussion for 10 or 15 minutes, and at the end of that, it was a nine, it was a unanimous vote not to allow chickens in backyards on lots smaller than an acre. So I just need to, you know, be clear, we've talked about this, we talked about it a couple of years ago when Sam was on the council, we talked about it. There was some suggestion at the time that we might even try a pilot program, and, you know, that might be an option. But my request today would be that we consider separating the chicken ordinance part from the rest of this ag ordinance and that we look at it as two separate items so that we could vote separately on those.
Larry, do you want to say something?
You can do that.
I would second what, because I was going to ask for next week to have two proposals, if you, one with chickens and one without chickens, so that if some of us did not want to vote for the for the chickens, we'd have a way to do that. I would say, and Georgie, thank you for your survey that you sent us from several years ago. I don't know how many of you have seen Georgie's survey, but she has in there something very, very interesting and true, and it applies to my survey also. It says that this is not a statistically accurate survey because it only got the responses that came in, and it did not meet the test of being a statistically correct survey. I've conducted surveys in Ward Three now for a number of years at neighborhood meetings, and in those meetings, every neighborhood association where I have asked, the majority of the people have been against chickens in the backyard. That's an R1 neighborhood, and that's my result. So that's going to temper, obviously, what I do in a couple, unless that changes. And I'd like to appeal to the Ward Three residents to let me know what your feelings are between now and, what, four weeks from now when the final vote is adjourned, so that I have more accurate data. Along that same line, is there a, is there a problem with collecting rainwater and what we hear in the summertime as far as mosquitoes and first, what is it, Nile, West Nile disease? And get rid of all your standing water? I'm confused on that.
Yeah, and that's why there's a provision in there that the water entering the collection vessel has to be filtered, I mean, screened.
So once it goes in the vessel, the mosquitoes can't clean it in there?
Mosquitoes kind of get in there.
Okay, thank you. And then another question, if a neighborhood has a covenant, and let's just take something like corn, can they write in their covenant that says you can't grow corn in a front yard?
Yes, yes.
But then they have to force that?
They have to enforce it, yes, not us.
And you don't. So they can come up with their own restrictions, they just have to be responsible for enforcing them?
Right.
Thank you, sir.
That same thing applies to chickens also, the covenant.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, if you, if your neighborhood was developed and has a covenant against chickens, well, then it'd be a violation of it. We couldn't pass an ordinance that lets you have chickens because it'd be against the covenant.
Right. Yeah, you're not going to, I mean, if chickens were permitted, you're not going to see them all over the city. I mean, they'll be, they'll be concentrated in certain areas. Some areas will be more supportive of chickens than others. I'm not expecting a whole host of coop applications up in Galatia, for example, but even though they're more than an acre. So, I mean, you know, from my viewpoint, you know, having, I probably have more experience with chickens than anybody in this room, for sure. But I think a lot of the concerns about chickens relate to roosters. A lot of concerns relate to smell and et cetera, and I would make the argument that it's really a fur versus feathers argument, that you can have up to five cats and dogs. And for me, those are a more noxious use than than chickens. So I know that's my personal view on this, but chickens are, just hands are a very innocuous creature that you're not generally going to hear. And I know there are two councilmen who completely disagree with me on that, but I'm basing...
Russell, I don't want to be testy, but what size property did you grow up on?
About quarter acre.
Urban lot?
Yes. We had 2,000 chickens.
Boy, I've got some stories for you. Anyway, my anecdotal evidence is that folks that I've spoken to that have lived next door to chickens?
Right.
Do not want chickens.
And there are a lot of other people. This is, this is the balance, yeah, because there are a lot of people who are very supportive of chickens and are very keen to ensure that the kids know where their food comes from. And I think that's a very compelling argument.
Legal staff is recommending that we get a motion to bring this back with chickens and then one version that includes chickens, one with and one without.
Yeah, my request was that we have two separate, you know, not just one with and one without, but actually two separate proposals, one that would change the ordinance for chickens and one that would change the rest of the ag ordinance.
I think we're talking about the same thing. Is that understood?
Yes, and I discussed it with Dan. You could vote today to split these into two separate ordinances and then bring it back next week for reintroduction with and public hearing. You could do those two phases at the same time.
Well, that would be my motion, and I would make a motion that we separate these and bring it back next week.
All right, we have, we'll leave that motion on the table because I have three people that have signed up to speak, and let's hear from them before we vote. You'll have three minutes to speak. And again, there's a public hearing in two weeks, so if you'd rather speak then, you're free to. But since you signed up to speak, I want to give you an opportunity today. Sarah Braden?
Hi, thanks.
Good morning, welcome back.
Thanks. My name is Sarah Braden. I live at 1143 Northwest 38th Street in Oklahoma City. And I'll, I realize that I'll have other opportunities to speak, so I'll make it brief. I'd love to address the corn in the front yard issue. Unfortunately, I don't have my copy of the weeds, the part of the ordinance that discusses weeds, but my understanding of it is that if someone grows corn in their front yard, which is currently legal, you know, when it's a beautiful green corn plant, that's legal. And once it's dead and brown and looks awful, they're supposed to pull it up, just like if you have a tree in your front yard, you know, and it's alive, then you're fine. And once, you know, if the tree dies, then you have to pull it up. So, you know, as far as people being concerned that, you know, once, you know, once this passes, everyone's going to go out and plow up their front yard and plant corn, I, you know, those, I think the, I think the weed, the part of the city municipal code that covers weeds, you know, would cover that. Yeah, so that's my understanding. As far as the chickens go, I really, I am so grateful to Russell Clausen and everyone else at, you know, in the planning department for how hard they worked on this. Not only did they ask urban farmers here in Oklahoma City, they also, you know, looked at, they really did look at what other cities all across the country have already done or are doing. And I'd be happy to provide all kinds of information about, about the, you know, not only the big league cities, but cities that are on all kinds of lists of the best cities for new businesses. And we really want to be on those lists, and in a lot of cases, we are on those lists, and we're one of the few cities that's on that, those lists that doesn't allow backyard chickens. So, you know, this is not something that, that's going to be an embarrassment to us if they allow the backyard chickens. And I really think it should be a package deal. You know, it's coming from, from people in the city who are already gardening, community gardeners, you know, backyard gardeners who, who know what, what really is a normal, perfectly respectable way to have a garden, and it includes chickens. I'd also like to say that the average dog, I have the statistic here somewhere, the average dog produces 12 ounces of solid waste every day, and the average chicken, 1.5 ounces. So, you know, if people are concerned about smell, just having one dog is producing a lot more waste than having six chickens. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sarah, thanks. Kathy, nice longer?
I'm here.
Okay. Jessica Thompson?
Hello again. I'm Jessica Thompson, 1414 Northwest 14th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73106. I'd just like to start off by saying, why did the chicken cross the road to get to the other side? In my neighborhood, there's a lot of, there's a majority of Hispanic neighbors, and we do see chickens, and they cross the road. I have pictures. But I'll be honest, they're not as bad as dogs. Cats are fine. We see a lot of those, too, a lot of strays. But with the whole chicken deal, I have a few neighbors that do have chickens, and they're really not that bad. A few of them do have roosters, which I think it's great that Russell's addressing the rooster because that is, they are very obnoxious. They are practically like dogs in that sense. But with the, as a kid growing up, coming from a younger generation, I ate a lot of fast food, chicken nuggets, et cetera. And it's, I think it's really great that we're addressing this because a lot of people want to know where their food is coming from. And us as the younger generation, we will be raising the next generation, and I think it's important to teach our kids where their food is coming from. And I've had a lot of people, because I do have neighbors that have chickens, I've had a lot of people ask, you know, well, how, how do you get eggs without a rooster? Which is funny that Russell mentioned that because it's so funny how people my age are not familiar with the reproduction process, with the reproduction process of a chicken. But I just wanted to say, please consider it. And Meg, I will email you any information about chickens if you'd like, and thank you for your time.
All right. We have a motion and a second to bring forth two items on December 17th and we'll hold a public hearing.
Can I ask for one other thing on this?
Sure.
When the staff comes in next week, or two weeks from now and talks about this, do we have some idea on how they intend to enforce it? We don't have enough code inspectors right now, supposedly, if we only react to complaints. And here we're going to put another burden on them to inspect, count chickens in the backyard?
We'd be happy to, Mr. Crime, but the fact of the matter is, we do get chicken complaints now and do enforce them. We have, I don't remember hundreds, if not, thousands of complaints.
I think this eases the process. I mean, I think it actually lightens that burden because they have difficulty being able to interpret. There's either a lack of language or insufficient language in the current code to be able to enable them to enforce. So I don't think we're putting an extra burden on, I think we're just clarifying it for them.
Hopefully so. The second question I have is, was there any consideration given to limiting front yard gardens strictly decorative?
To decorative?
Yeah.
No, because we didn't change that part of the ordinance. We're basically just putting definitions in there about...
We could define it that way.
...nuisance and high grass and weeds. That would be, that would be an additional change.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Can I ask Kenny two questions? So I just want to understand that what Meg's bringing up in Heritage Hills, they can address that in their covenant and you wouldn't allow, be allowed to have chickens in Heritage Hills, is that...
Yes, chickens can always be addressed in a covenant.
Okay, so any neighborhood that doesn't want, can just, can address it in the covenant?
They'd address it as a covenant.
Right.
And then, as you know, the city doesn't enforce the covenants. That has to be enforced by the, either the neighborhood association or by some property owner within the neighborhood.
Okay. Secondly, we've heard today that there's no, that the 1 acre, 1.0 acre threshold is arbitrary, that there's been no rational or empirical data to support that number. Could it, could a private property owner with 0.8 acres bring suit against the city alleging discrimination based on this testimony, basically that it's arbitrary, that there's no empirical data to support it, that there's no health data that says that 1.0 acres is a, is a scientifically supported threshold? Could they bring suit against the city?
They could, and since our planning director is saying it's arbitrary, we would have to hire an outside contract planner to testify on our behalf to try to defend that.
That was, that was a speculative comment, obviously.
It's, yeah. If you can come up, the law is, if you can come up with any rational basis to defend the line that you draw, then the court will defer to the governing body. So if there's any rational basis for the one acre, such as a more denser population of chickens in less than, in six, in less than one acre, would pose a potential threat to the health or general welfare of the adjoining properties, you can, you can defend it.
But you can't, you can't just make that up.
No, if it's entirely arbitrary and capricious and no one can come up with a rational basis for it, then it's unconstitutional.
But we have literally hundreds of lines drawn in our ordinances. On a five acre tract, you can, on a 4.9 acre tract, you cannot do that. We have all kinds of lines that are drawn in our ordinances that do not have necessarily empirical data to back those up.
And that's what the court says, that if you can pose any, the line has to be drawn somewhere, and if the governing body can put forth any rational basis for drawing the line at that point, then it will, it's valid.
So, okay. Thank you.
Is there an economic quotient in there? I mean, is there an economic factor in...
It can be any, any rational basis you can come up with, such as devaluation of surrounding properties, or any, any type of rational basis that would tend to support where you've drawn the line. And it's established by a witness, so you have someone that testifies.
I think, I think you all can be part of the public hearing we're going to have.
No, no, but I think, I think Kenny is gently trying to tell Councilman Shadid that it's not arbitrary, and I think that's what he's saying, is that there is enough basis, even though Russell said you backed him into saying...
That was a speculative comment, because I was not around at that talk.
I understand, he backed you into saying it's arbitrary, but I don't think it's arbitrary in the, in the sense that Kenny's talking about. That's my view. That's, that's not a...
I was actually trying to tell Russell, don't say it's arbitrary.
I know he was, I know he was.
The, let me ask you just another question about the chickens, though, because this, this probably will go to the public hearing part of it. The, the maximum is six, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that is, you have to, you have to have an X number of square foot to get to six. You could be in a situation where you could only have two.
Yes, that's possible, yeah. Yeah, because the six, you'd need 24 square feet in the coop and double that for outside access.
Right, but it could be possible that you couldn't, so everybody wouldn't necessarily be qualified to get six chickens in their backyard.
Correct, correct. You could have zero. But, you know, more than an acre, there's no limit.
Okay. One other thing I want to do, I want to clarify what the motion is. Is the motion going to be to bring back a separate chicken piece, or, I like thighs, if that's what we do, but if, or is it going to be bringing back two ordinances, one with the chickens and one without?
I've discussed it further with Francis, and we decided the best way for you to do it is to strike what's on today, and then it will be brought back next week as two ordinances to be introduced and then set for public hearing and then a final hearing.
One with chickens, or just chickens only?
Right.
And the other one with everything else?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm voting on if I vote for that, on this motion.
So I'm going to modify that motion then, strike this, to bring back two ordinances, one addressing chickens and one addressing the rest of the ordinance changes.
Correct. Right.
All right, let's vote. Passed unanimously. Public hearing will be set for December 17th.
Did I hear Kenny, they'll say that we have to be introduced?
Hold on, hold on.
Correct, Mayor. The, the ordinances will have to be reintroduced on December 17th. The public hearing will be December 31st for final adoption.
I think so many people have already been told that it's going to be on the 17th. Is there a way around this? I hate to delay the public hearing for those that already made it.
They would be here for the introduction again. I mean, you can have, you can hold a hearing on the introduction, too. It's essentially, it's just, and they'd still have the opportunity to speak and say whatever they wanted to at the introduction.
The, the, we have a resolution that talks about the three process. Even though we're technically changing it, from a practical standpoint, we're really not. Could we not just waive that for that day because we've really introduced? There's no changes other than the separation of it. So could we not just waive that and have the introduction and the public hearing on the 17th?
You can.
On the 3rd?
Why, why should we do that, though?
Well, that's your choice.
Well, I think because it has been publicized to some extent and communicated that the public hearing is going to be on the 17th.
Okay, the same communication channel that said it was going to be on the 17th could say it's going to be on the 31st. I think we, you know, we have a resolution in effect. The hearings on an ordinance will be a three-step process, pre-meeting process. And I have heard...
I just don't think we've...
Well, I, I think because it has been publicized to some extent and communicated that the public hearing is going to be on the 17th.
Okay. The same communication channel that said it was going to be on the 17th could say it's going to be on the 31st. I, I think we, you know, we have a resolution in effect. The hearings on an ordinance will be a three-step process, pre-meeting process. And I, I have heard-
I just don't think we've changed anything.
Well, we, we were going to have, not going to have a meeting. We're going to have the public hearing introduced at the same day. And so, we'll have all these comments, and then we'll have another period with more comments?
Well, no, you would have the, with what the mayor is proposing, you would have the introduction and the public hearing on December the 17th. It'd be combined into one.
And we would vote on the 31st.
Correct.
Which is the same timeframe we were under today.
Right.
Because I, I mean, I don't think we've changed anything either. We're just, we're just making two votes. I mean, it's all, we haven't even amended it, really. We just split it up.
And the question is, is it legal?
It's, yes, it's legal.
Okay.
I mean, yes, it's just a resolution. It's, it's only a, a procedure council has established, so you can waive that anytime.
Okay. Is council comfortable with it?
You-
Okay.
So, we're, but you're, so you're saying you can combine two steps into one day on the ordinance?
Correct.
We can do that anytime we want?
For his three, for his three hearing pro, for the Councilman Ryan's three hearing process, yes, you can do that. It's, it's just a resolution.
Okay, so anytime going forward-
The council could wait.
Not just for chickens, but for any other, we can combine two of the three into one day?
You can. If you-
It won't, but it won't ever be docketed that way by staff because the resolution directs
them to docket it the other way. So, you'd have to request it in advance for it to be done that way. And then council would either vote on or in effect be waiving the resolution. The only thing you can't do at the same day is introduce and final hearing unless it's an emergency ordinance.
All right. The mayor is looking for direction. We have a, okay, I'd like to keep us on the same timeframe. I'm not seeing a whole lot of dissension. Everybody okay? Okay.
This, to me, this is the easy one to do that way because we're not changing the ordinance itself, we're just dividing it. If we were amending any part of the ordinance, then the argument that we ought to wait another two weeks, it seemed to me, might hold water. But in this case, we're not amending anything. We're just dividing it up into two pieces. I don't think that, that violates the spirit of what Pat had in mind when we did the three-phase thing. And so, I'm, I'm okay with it.
So, if you vote, if you vote to strike it today with the directions to staff, it will come back on December 17th and the memos will say on each one, ordinance to be introduced and public hearing held on-
Which is why we used to do everything.
And final hearing adoption December 31st. But that's the only difference.
All right, let's vote. Cast your votes.
We have voted on, it's, it's stricted.
Okay.
That's the only thing we had to act on.
So, we're done?
You have.
All right.
And, and staff has direction to go forward.
Okay.
Eight I.
We're on to item eight I. This is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under eight I?
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight J is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight J? All right, how about a motion?
Move the items.
Do we have a second? Have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item K is a resolution affecting the general fund balance. This is something the council's been discussing for, gosh, I guess we started it last in spring when we're going through the, the budget process?
Yes.
And the, I think in the, in the broader packet, the projects are largely listed for most of the wards. Do we have a motion?
Move the items.
Okay, any comments or questions here?
Mayor, I'm going to, I'm going to vote against it to be consistent with the way I voted and spoke in the past about it. I'm glad that we're, we have the $8 million fund balance, and I'm glad it's being spent chiefly on roads, which is kind of the council policy. But I, again, I don't like the, the, the look of it for it to be divided among the wards. And I especially don't like the fact that we're deviating this time and spending a half a million dollars on a project that is not on the council's priority list. This agreement would permit spending a half a million dollars on the quiet zone, which I voted against when we did it the first time. And I think it's just, I think what we've done is we've, that, that totally, um, is kind of a proof of what I've been arguing, that it be, it is, that, that one thing right there proves that if there's any concern about it being a pork project, then that's it. Now, I understand that the private sector put money in the quiet zone and all that. I just don't think that's how we ought to be doing it. I just, I just think that I should not, um, be able to build a, a canal in front of my house or whatever I wanted, anything. My pet project should not be used, this money shouldn't be used for that purpose. The number one priority the citizens have are streets, and that's what we are, and I, I can hold my nose and deal with that. But I can't hold my nose and deal with just pet projects. If we want to change the, how we prioritize this, we ought to adopt a policy and say, we all agree that this money should not be spent by wards. Or even if it is spent by wards, it should be spent on the number one priority, which is, that's citizens' number one priority, which is roads. I don't, I don't, I don't want to get into, I mean, I don't want to do any more, but, but I just can't vote for it, even though I, even though I'm glad the road's going to be built, and I'm glad a million dollars worth of them are going to be built in Ward Four. But I still don't think that's the way to do it.
All right, cast your votes.
Your honor, may I ask a question?
Uh huh, sure.
On this list that we have out here, it says Ward Two, to be determined. Will we vote on that separately when it comes through?
Yes.
All right. Cast your votes. And it passes six, seven, six. Yeah, six to one. Seven to one. Can count. Seven to one. We're on to item eight L. Understand we do need executive session on this item?
We do.
Yes.
Okay, cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. Item eight M, I understand we do need executive session on this?
That's correct.
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes. And it moves to executive session. Item eight N, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
So, we'll just strike it. Move on to item eight O. Claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight O? All right, how about a motion?
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item nine?
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. We're on item 10. It's items from council, and we probably ought to get started with the, the late addition that's come to us from Councilman White. Pete, do you want to go ahead and discuss it?
Yes. I, um, I, I, I've talked about this before. I am just convinced that the time is now to expand the, the membership on the council by two more wards and go to 10 wards. I think, um, when we went to eight wards in the first place, back in the 20, I believe it was the late 20s, there, the city was, had a population of about 50,000 to 60,000 people and 50 to 60 square miles, and we had eight councilmen. Now, we're 10 times that size and we still have eight councilmen. I, I think the idea that has been, in the past, the idea has been that if everybody has a little rural, a little urban, that creates a balance. That sounds good, but I think as a practical matter, it doesn't create a balance. It disenfranchises one segment of the, of the, of your community or the other, either those that live in the rural area or those that live in the urban area. Because it's going to favor where the majority of the people live. And I think, um, it's, it's just time. We, our, our council wards are larger than most any city in the United States, except for those that are not, like Alaska, where they've annexed 7,000 square miles or something. Our, our wards are larger. I think any of us that, especially those that have both large wards in terms of, of population, which all of us do, but those of us that have large wards in terms of geography, which not all of us do, are experience the, the difficulty, the diversity in opinion between one area and another. I think that would reduce that. Secondly, I think that, that Oklahoma City is rapidly approaching the time when it's going to be a minority-majority city. And you look around this horseshoe, and we don't, we, this horseshoe does not look like Oklahoma City any longer. Just look at all of us. We don't, Okla, 40-some percent of the people in this city, 40-plus percent now are minorities. But we, you don't see that reflected on this horseshoe. And I think it would, it would be one way to encourage minority participation would be to, um, to have the ward smaller, where the, where the minority populations aren't split up as much. There would be at least one ward, I suspect, that would be, one more ward, that would be minority-majority. And I think that, that's just, I think the time's come to do it. I'm, what I'm really asking, though, is not that we vote to do it, but that we vote to, we, we, we express our intent that, that we form a committee of two or three, or three or four people with the idea of looking at it. Again, I want to tell you how it was motivated, in, in case anybody has any, any concerns about my motivation for doing it. First of all, I first talked about this in 1986. It didn't have anything to do with something that's happened in the last year or so. It's not an old thing with me, it's not a new thing with me. It's an old thing. I've thought about it for a long, long time. But second, when the word was that somebody is going to circulate initiative petition to, uh, to term limit council members, I realized, and probably should have known it before, that the number of signatures on a term limit on, on any initiative petition is very low, arbitrarily very low. The mayor won four years ago, almost unopposed, and that's the lowest turnout in a long, long time. And so, it's 25% of that vote, which is only 6,000 signatures. So, if we're going to do this, and if the council's not going to be willing to look into it, I'd like to know that so that I can make a decision about an initiative petition to do it while it's easy enough to, while it's still possible to do it. I suspect this next election, there's going to be a lot more than 6,000 people vote. It's going to jack that 25% up where it's going to be very expensive to try to do it. So, that's just, that's both the, part of that's the practical side of it.
Didn't we do this a couple of years ago? Have a study?
We had kind of an informal council discussion at the time.
Well, we, we've talked about it before, but we never had a, not really in depth.
Well, you know, I'm not sure I understand the purpose, the true purpose of this resolution yet. And I'm not sure what benefit it would have to have rent councilman up here versus eight council. Um, we, I think we need to look at the cost. How much is it costing us to do that? And, and does it benefit all our citizens? I, I actually, I have a hard time. We represent in my ward about 73,000. I think that's been pretty much the makeup of wards after the last census. And it's not an onerous burden, but I think the people in my ward are represented. And if they want to call me, I'll answer their calls and talk to them. But I, it hasn't been a burden yet. And so, I'm not sure that, that I really see the need to go to 10 wards right now.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the minority on this council, I have mixed views about this for several, several reasons. Um, Oklahoma, a few years ago, Oklahoma City Public Schools, uh, half of their members of the, of the school board were minorities. You had two Hispanics and you had two African-Americans. Half of the board were minorities. But the problem became when the establishment disagreed with the decisions that the minority representation on, on the school board, um, they, they disagreed. So, what they did was, they ran people against those minority elected officials. Uh, we look at those, we, we had Wilfredo, um, who represented, he was, he was Hispanic. We had David Castillo, who's Hispanic, Ruth Veals, who's African-American, and Angela Munson, who is also African-American. And I look at those races, those campaigns. And Wilfredo's, uh, race, the person who ran against Tim Racebette, they showed in, in the mail out, they showed a picture of Wilfredo with his shirttail tucked out and mustard on his shirt. Then David Castillo, they did some things to him. Angela Munson, same thing. But the point of my deal, conversation piece to this is that minorities got elected on the school board. And I believe that minorities can be elected, uh, in, in other wards. Do we need to create two extra wards for minorities to serve on this council? I believe that, again, minorities can win in other wards. But the problem has been for years, the establishment, uh, the establishment, the establishment is not too friendly sometimes to minority candidates. That's where the problem lies. It's not necessarily of how, how many wards you have, because you're still going to have the same issues. Minority candidates need support. It's hard for minorities to raise money, to organize. It's hard. Uh, and so, this whole adding an extra two wards, I, I, I still kind of question, will we truly create a more diverse council, or would it stood up right now as eight and one, would, would it be 10 and one? Um, but we have to get, uh, down to the bottom of truly creating diversity in our political process. I'm glad that the city council, uh, is nonpartisan, because I represent such a diverse ward. Uh, Ward Seven is just not African-American, uh, anymore. Um, but again, to add two wards, I don't, I'm not quite for sure, will it truly create the diversity? Because if you look at Ward Two, I strongly believe that African-American can be city councilman in Ward Two. And, and also Ward Four and some of the other wards. But the problem is, again, the recruitment of minority candidates and also making sure minority candidates have the support base, have the funding. Because a lot of times when you go against the establishment, uh, minorities are lack the resources. Uh, so, but I, I really believe that that's the number one problem why we don't have diversity on this council.
All right. What else over here? Yeah, Larry?
I'm just, uh, I'm not in favor of this, so I'll say that upfront and not going through the study. The, the resolution that comes out, by the way, calls for a 10-person committee, not five, uh, in there. And I, but, uh, in a little historical perspective, and Mayor, you probably, you remember this, I don't think anybody else was on the council after the 2000, uh, the, the one before this redistricting, Mayor Humphries was in charge. And Mayor Humphries had the idea at that time to make the wards, uh, the same as far as the makeup. That was one of his ideas. So, a, a councilman would have all rural and another councilman would have all inner-city. And he had a whole plan laid out like that. I opposed that at the time because it was not what Ward Three was and not what Ward Three is today. I think there's a tremendous benefit from being able to have constituents who bring a double-A emphasis to the table and those who bring an R1 emphasis to the table, to simplify it. Because it's our job as council people, not only to represent the people of the ward, but to do what's best for the city as a whole. And it gives us an hands-on experience. So, that's a tremendous benefit I see in the way that Ward Three is currently constituted. That can be changed by us redistricting without going from, from eight to 10. If we want to make a one ward all double-A and another ward all, you know, R1, we can do that without going from eight to 10. So, I don't see those two going together. And I do see some advantage in having mixed wards wherever possible to get that perspective. Thank you, Your Honor.
James?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in support of the, the 10-ward idea. And it's primarily because of just of my view that basically what Councilman White said right at the beginning of, the city's grown so much. And, you know, nine people basically represent the entire city. And so, I think that if 11 people represented the entire city, it would be better because it's spreading out the power a little bit more. And it is- And it is, it will allow each council member to represent their constituencies better. I mean, I don't, I don't know if you could really argue that it would make it worse, that, that we would represent them worse. You could say that it wouldn't change anything, but that's really my main reason for supporting it, is because it, it just spreads out the power on a city that's so much bigger than what, what it was whenever we came up, when we had eight, when, when eight boards was established, so.
Okay. Ed, do you want to say anything?
Just a question, do we, do we know standard practices in cities around us? Do we know per capita, I mean, number of citizens per council persons?
It's, we, we did some research back when we looked at it after the ten census. I don't have that date in front of me. I seem to recall it was kind of all over the board.
But presumably, that would be a purpose of having this study group is to come up with practices in other cities and study the issue and figure out if we're an outlier or if we're, I mean, all, all we're talking about is just, is studying the issue. So I...
Your Honor, if I may make a comment. I don't mind studying the issue, but I do have an objection to the council making the decision as to what's best for the people. I think this is a very important decision and one that should be put to the vote of the people, as opposed to us deciding how many, what's the best number of counselors to represent the city. So I don't mind having, or in fact, I encourage, having community meetings to explore the ideas, but I'd like to get some feedback from the general public as to what they see are the, you know, their concerns, and do they believe that adding two additional counselors will address those concerns? So I would recommend that we go first to get input from the general public. Thank you.
Meg?
Mayor, I guess if I could, John, I think I'm considered a minority in this group too. You're not the only one. I'm just a, I'm just a slightly different one. You know, and, and that's an issue too. I'm not opposed to a study necessarily. You know, I, I think, following a lot of the comments previously, we did look at this pretty hard feat two years ago, and when we did the redistricting. And part of the reason we did the redistricting the way we did was, I think, to try to address some of those concerns. I'm very proud to represent Ward six, and I think I can claim that I have the most diverse ward in the city in terms of its numbers. And I, I believe I represent them very well. Not everybody all the time, but I believe I represent them well. My concerns, some of them are technical. We can't fit ten people up here. It's going to be expensive. We're going to have to hire more staff. We're going to have to make a bunch of changes. And coming from the city of New York, where I think there's something like sixty-four aldermen, and they come from wards, there's a North Korean ward, there's a South Korean ward, there's a Chinatown ward, there's a, they can't get anything done. It doesn't work well. And I think, you know, we heard our mayors, former mayors today, say the real hallmark of this city's success for the last twenty years is collaboration and unity and the ability to get things done. So I'm a little concerned about it from that point. I'm not going to object to studying it. I, I think it's worthy. I personally don't believe in carving out special-purpose wards for any reason.
Okay. We have a motion? Yeah, Pete?
Well, I, well, I don't want anybody to think that I think that I'm doing this because I think anybody on this horse shoe is not doing a good job. I mean, I return my calls too. I mean, I'm sure, I mean, I, I, I try. I'm sure all of us do a good job. I don't, this is not an insinuation that somebody doesn't do a good job, but it is kind of a commentary on in nineteen twenty-nine, or whatever year it was that we decided on eight, that was the number of people that were going to represent Oklahoma City forever. I mean, at what point does Oklahoma City big enough geographically or population-wise that maybe eight's not the right number? If this is not, you know, if that's the, if the question is, everything's so wonderful, why don't we just cut it back to six? You know, that'd make the fundraising a whole lot easier, there'd only be six. Or why don't we cut it back to three? You know, so, somebody fifty years ago, eighty years ago, decided that it was okay, eight was a magic number, and we shouldn't ever deal with that. To me, that, that, come on. That's, that's not logical. That's not logical. At some point in time, when you're ten times larger geographically and population-wise, it makes some sense to at least think about the idea that maybe a couple more people's ideas in the, in the mix wouldn't hurt anything. I mean, that's, that's really what I'm saying. I, I don't know whether to create diversity or not. It has a better chance of doing, nine has a, eleven has a better chance of doing that than nine. I, I mean, that's just mathematically true. I don't think, I'm not saying anybody doesn't represent a ward, but I do believe that there is a difference. We all represent, the squeaking wheel's what gets the grease. And we know that there are areas in our wards that don't, that, they just, it doesn't work that way. It's not like we are the balance, and it's a teeter-totter, and you have this interest on one end and this interest on the other, and our job is to level them. That's not the way it works. Whichever where, wherever the votes are, wherever the squeaking wheel is, the teeter-totter's going to go that way. And so the more, the more of us there are, the more people are going to have a voice in the process. It's not, I don't want to get too hung up on it. You can't create diversity in that sense, but it, it reminds me of the arguments against affirmative action. When, the arguments against affirmative action is, it's some kind of a process where you're supposed to go out and select minorities regardless of qualifications and bring them in. Well, that's not what affirmative action ever was designed to be. Never was. And it was, it was, it was perverted by people that didn't like the process to be that. This is the same thing. I'm not saying you can go out and bring in other people, people of color, or more women, or whatever, but I, but you have, the more opportunities you provide, the more likely you are to be able to do that. And as a city that looks like Oklahoma City does, and a council that looks like this one does, I can't help but be struck by, we ought to do what we can to make that happen. If we can't, we can't. But I, I do think we'd do a better job if we had smaller wards and represented fewer people. And that's it. Doesn't have anything to do with anything beyond that. I, I move that we establish the committee and, and that the number be set by the mayor to determine how many to have, and, and we agree to look at it over the next...
The resolution calls for nine, and I'm comfortable with that number.
Okay.
And I think the idea, I'll, I'll...
Actually, I asked for the resolution, but I didn't deal with the specifics, and so nine came.
Well, let's vote, and if it passes, then I can speak more to the, to the process.
Exactly.
If it doesn't pass, then...
But I, I'm okay with that. But I, I think we ought to just look at it. If we don't, if, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. We just go from there.
All right, is there a second? All right. Cash your votes. And the motion passes seven to two. What I'll do is get in touch with each council member individually, ask if you'd like to serve, or if there's someone in your ward that you would prefer serve in your stead, and then we'll start scheduling.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. All right, items from council. James, you want to keep us going? Ed?
I do have two items that I would look, two, two issues that require policy from council that really occurred before half of us were on the council. One, the first has to do with police manpower. And that, the last study that we had was done by Berkshire, released in February of two thousand nine, and we talk a lot about police manpower. Sometimes people, you know, the, the question I would have as a policy is, what number are we trying to hit? Berkshire gave a recommendation as to how many police officers it thought we needed to add. Do we accept or reject those, those recommendations? Have things changed in the four ensuing years? I, I'd like to hear from Chief City in two weeks as to an update maybe of the Berkshire study. What number does, is our target? What number are we trying to hit? Whether we can, you know, we talked about the financing of it and the plan to get there. But what is the policy, what is the target that we're trying to hit as a body? And what would Chief City's recommendation as, as police chief be on what that target should be? So I'd hope that we could have that discussion, maybe as a report from the city manager, in two weeks. Second, as I've, I've come to, just talking to Kenny, kind of realized about our record retention policy. And our record retention policy is something, most, most states have a, have a statute that defines what cities need to keep and, and not keep, and for how long. Our state really kind of leaves it up to the cities. They don't say that you have to have a policy, they just say that you should have a policy. Our, our city, Oklahoma City, had a, a policy, a record retention policy in two thousand four, and then had an updated one introduced on April fifth, two thousand eleven, I think, just the week before David and I came on to the council. And in that, I think there, you know, Norman dealt with this issue a few years, and they had quite a bit of debate, and they ended up changing the record retention policy. Because it left to the discretion of everyone in the city as to, for example, emails. Emails were discretionary, and they could be deleted at the end of the day. That's currently the city of Oklahoma City's policy, is that all emails, presumably of the forty-three hundred employees, and, and any, anyone associated with the city of Oklahoma City can delete their emails at the end of the day. And then the IT department comes along, I believe sixty days later, and scrubs those emails off of the hard drive. So there's no record at the end of the day, but then sixty days later, they're permanently removed from ever being accessed. I guess I'd ask, is that, is that the policy that we all are comfortable with? Norman was not comfortable with that, ended up changing it. But is that the, is that the record retention policy that we're comfortable with as a body? Is that all emails can be deleted at the end of the day, and then our IT department comes along and, and scrubs them off the hard drive? That IT department coming along later and scrubbing them off the hard drive, I'm not seeing in the record retention policy. And so I'm, I'm not sure where that is, or where that policy is written. If it's not, then it needs to be added to the record retention policy. Another thing that wasn't addressed in two thousand eleven was calendars, who we're all meeting with. And, and, and there's discrepancy apparently between my, my calendar, Pete White's calendar, you know, Debbie Martin sends us an email that says who we're meeting with, and it basically has a calendar, and that, that's been, that's accessible since the time that I started on the council. I understand from, from the mayor's office that there's been eight years of, of calendar that's been deleted from the computer. So we have no record whatsoever of meetings, digital or paper, of the calendar of the highest-ranking official in the city. That wasn't addressed in the two thousand eleven policy. If we're okay with that, then, then fine, it needs to be added. There needs to be equilibration between, you know, whose calendars we're keeping and whose we're deleting from the computer. And so I just, I'm just introducing that. I'd look for direction from the, from the council, maybe look, and from Francis, you know, to look at, at surrounding cities and what their policy is, and, and look for guidance. And I, I guess I'd look first from Francis to kind of tell us what, what surrounding cities are doing, and, and then from the council as to those specific issues, emails and calendar, but maybe to, to look at that April fifth resolution and see if there's anything else that needs to be addressed. Thanks.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank Joey Allen and Amy Howers from Castle Falls for hosting and putting on the Friends of Northwest Tenth Street Christmas luncheon yesterday for the businesses and citizens that are involved in the Northwest Tenth Street improvement effort. And then also thank George Feeney, the retired firefighters, for the hospitality they showed my wife and I last night at their annual Christmas dinner. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Pete?
I, I too enjoyed the evening last night with the retired firefighters. The, they changed their format around a little bit, and it was, it was a fun evening, a lot of time to talk to old friends and a lot of people I've been around a long time, like I have you. Know a lot of those folks at those meetings, and in fact, Bob Hollander's wife asked me to sit with her when I couldn't find a seat, and it was just, it was, he was a district chief here a long time ago, and, and just a great guy, and, and it was good. Councilman Greenwood was there last night, Councilman McAtee, and Councilman Pettis and I, and Councilman Shadid were there, and it was just a nice evening, very nice.
David?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. One thing I just wanted to pass along, former councilman Jerry Foshee's regrets for not being able to attend this morning's meeting. He didn't find out until late yesterday that the individuals from the city council and mayors and business leaders were going to be here to kind of celebrate the MAPS program. And he was a part of the council when it first started throughout the MAPS program, and then when it was completed, so, and I'm sure he'll be here Wednesday and Friday as we continue the celebration of the MAPS program. I would, you know, I apologize on behalf of Nancy Anthony, who got called away from this morning's meeting. I do think we need to really emphasize the efforts and dollars that the community foundation has expended with respect to the USS Oklahoma anchor. It's the only remaining component of the USS Oklahoma. It's providential that, as the ship was being towed back to the United States, that the towing line broke and it sunk in the Pacific Ocean as opposed to ending up on a junk pile and being sold for scrap. And if I may ask for the indulgence of the council, there is a, a video that if we could share, that kind of helps us understand the importance. This is truly the, the true anchor from the USS Oklahoma, and, you know, the four-hundred-and-twenty-nine sailors and marines that were killed back on December seventh, I really think deserves a little bit more attention. And I hope, if nothing else, this presentation encourages people to observe the anchor. It's down in between Twelfth and Thirteenth Street on North Broadway.
In Pearl Harbor, these old mooring keys, now immortalized with the names of the noble battleships they once held, are scarred witnesses to stark heroism. By following their grim line, we make out a row of watery graves, white ghosts of the United States warships that became funeral pyres and watery tombs. Many of the dead remain at the posts they manned on that deadly December seventh. The gallantry of Pearl's defenders centers its legend on the Arizona Memorial, the somber national monument arching across the stark remains of a great United States battleship and more than a thousand of her sailors. To look into their memories is to look into their honor. The names memorialized here live in a place more durable than stone. They exist forever in the hearts of the nation to whom they gave all. Anyone who saw Honolulu in nineteen forty-one remembers a river of white uniforms flowing through its streets. The majestic battleships were floating cities within the city. The social life of Honolulu revolved around military dances, ships, band competitions, and intership baseball games and boxing matches. Drink, laughter, tattoos, and very brief romances were everywhere. The heart of the United States Navy sat concentrated in moorings along Ford Island. There were eight battleships, eight cruisers, thirty destroyers, and many auxiliaries, a hundred eighty-five vessels. No military base of the United States gathered more war machinery, and it was one big sitting dock.[1773.53] dock.
This is not a drill, this is not a drill. You don't order, you don't order. I'm waiting for your orders.
This is it. Attention, your order. It's condemned. From December 7th, 1941, serving onboard the USS Oklahoma, your lives were given in the defense of our country. Now, 66 years later each of you, 429 in all, now represented by individual white marble standards, are given lasting and pending records. Are all 429 present?
All present.
Very well. Thank you for your service to your nation. May God's perpetual light shine upon you. 429, you are dismissed for eternal service at the USS Oklahoma Memorial.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Boyd, thank you. You know, I get requests from various veterans throughout the year about the status of the anchor and unfortunately, just as this downtown area has grown and we've had changes in ownership of the various buildings and facilities, it's, it's moved around. And again, I just want to thank the, first of all, the efforts of Admiral Kirkpatrick in bringing the anchor here initially back in 1960 and then the cost and efforts that the Oklahoma City Community Foundation has incurred to protect and keep the anchor in its, a place at, at the park down there on 12th and Broadway. And, you know, it's unfortunate, it got, the ship got hit four times within a minute by four different torpedoes and as a result, it capsized some of the ships that were attacked. They were able to flood the opposite side and they would sink directly down, but not the Oklahoma. And then again, in 1947, as it was being towed back to the US, the cable broke and it sunk. And so this is the remaining component of the ship and we're just appreciative of the Oklahoma City Community Foundation's for its efforts. Thank you.
Thanks for drawing that to our attention, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to congratulate Hawthorne Elementary School. We had the ribbon cutting for the MAPS, completion of the MAPS renovations last week. Kids in the, everybody just had a marvelous time and were right. Hawthorne is one of the schools that's right at the very end of the list and they all decided that they didn't mind being at the end. They were happy with the results and, and waiting was a good thing. Congratulations to everybody that was involved in the River Parade. It was just a wonderful Friday night celebration. There were so many families and it wasn't great, John, so many families and young people down along the river watching the boats in the parade and it was very exciting. And I also would like to congratulate also in Ward 7, Dan Davis, for his spectacular renovation of the Cavalry Baptist Church. He's moved his law offices in there and it's just a wonderful project and a great gift to the city to have that beautiful church intact and being used.
All right. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank Ward 7 for coming out to the town hall meeting that focused on code enforcement a couple of weeks ago. This was my second town hall meeting and it was standing room only, again, standing room only. So again, thank you, Ward 7, for coming out, ensuring support and learning more about code enforcement. Also, I would like to thank Charles Locke and also the head of the Action Line for being there as well to answer concerns and actually tell which, actually to tell the duties of each division, each department, code enforcement, as well as the Action Center. This past weekend, Langston University lost their head of the Langston Oklahoma City campus, Dr. Blaine Hines passed away and his sleep and his service will be this coming up Friday. Dr. Hines was actually leading Langston University strategic plan for as the outlook of Langston University 10, 15 years from now. And so I had the great opportunity to work with him on the Langston Oklahoma City campus plan. Thanksgiving, I had the opportunity to do a police ride-along on Thanksgiving as well as had a chance to visit six of the eight fire station in Ward 7. So I spent my Thanksgiving with the police officers and firefighters, just to say thank, thank them for their service to our city. They spend their time away from their families on Thanksgiving, so it was just good to go by and just tell them thank you for a job well done for our city. This past Sunday, we celebrated the landmark, it was a matter of fact, December 1st, 1955, when Rosa Parks decided not to move from the front of the bus to the back of the bus. Our country has moved in a great direction over a course of time. As a city, we have moved in a positive direction for its diversity, but yes, work must be done. So again, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Pat?
Just one comment, Your Honor. Several of our projects in the consent docket today were additional expenditures. They're based on the state contract for service. And I hope we are continually vigilant in ensuring that those state contracts still are the best practices.
I can assure you that those are regularly reviewed to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. City manager reports?
Need to clarify something with Dr. Shadid here. Dr. Shadid and I had a conference sheet, I had a discussion last week about public safety and the direction we're going on that. The, in fiscal year 1213, we added 40 new positions to the police department, 34 of them were silver uniformed. The other, by the way, civilian ones went in there, some of those replaced uniformed positions, those could go out in the field. So the net was more than the 30, whatever number was, were actually uniformed positions. Last, or this present fiscal year in 1314, we added another 40 positions, all uniformed as, as we're going forward. There are really three things that I think that need to be discussed on the public safety is, one, what's the ultimate number? And I think that's probably what you were alluding to. The other is, how fast can we get them on board? And there's a practical aspect and Chief City believes that about 40 is, is a good number to add a year from the practical standpoint. And then the other issue is, what can we afford through the budget process? Last year, we did, the last two years, we've had a couple of, of some growth abilities within the budget and able to do that. This year, I would, I was anticipating having a policy discussion on public safety staffing as a part of the budget processes we go forward because I don't know how the budget's going to shape up and what we are. My hope is that we'll be able to add additional public safety staffing to the budget this year. It's too early to know that at this point in time and so I really believe that the budget process is a good way to do that, not really being able to do that for next week. And so my question is, I would prefer to do it as part of the budget process, but if you want, if the council wants something for next week, we can put something together quickly, but we really can't address the budget aspect of it because we're not going to have answers to that at this point in time.
That's fine. We, I'd just like to know from Chief City, I mean, finances and budget aside, what is, where are we now versus where our needs are? What, how far below, what is the target number? I think talking about financing and budget, I agree, we can address that during the budget process. I just want to know, you know, is, does the, does the results of the Berkshire study, are they still relevant four years later? Do they need, are they, how much, do they need to be tweaked? Where does he think we are today?
Okay, we can, we can have a discussion on that.
Right. Because the Berkshire study talked about that certain investigations, we didn't have enough manpower to complete certain investigations, that the morale of the police force was, was being threatened. And we have 60 less officers today than we did at the time of the study on the street. So I guess I would want to know, you know, just basically an update of the Berkshire study, we've got a thou, a net influx of 1,000 people a month. You know, the Berkshire study, I don't think ever saw that coming. I just like, like an update, I mean, in terms of numbers, not necessarily how you pay for it or how fast you can, although we could go into that as well, but, but really just, what is the target number and do we all agree with that number?
Which leads us right into the sales tax report, which is a nice segue. The sales tax check for November was, was a little bit better. It was, it was a one and a half, one and a half percent over target and 5.2% over last year. So for the first five months of the year, we do exceed last year's collections by about a percent. We're still under target by about 2.8%, a couple million dollars, but our economists talked about more of a robust growth in the second half of this fiscal year. Whether they're right or not, we, we won't know until we get, get through it. So the November check does help us as we're going forward, make the budget year look a little bit better.
But our overall increase over last year was less than 1%.
That's correct.
And so I think we plateaued and we need to be cautious about spending money we don't have.
And the use tax that's 10% below is, why is that?
Well, first, first of all, the, the use tax is a much smaller percentage, so it isn't what's driving our, our budget. And the use tax is always hard to predict because it's so, it's so volatile, but the fact is, yes, it is down. It's down a million one under target, a million one under last year. We projected it'd be about the same as last year.
It's just harder to predict.
Yeah, it is because it's companies coming in and, and buying equipment and drilling operations and there's a lot of things that affect that.
Okay.
It's always been much more volatile and harder to predict.
All right. Citizens to be heard. We have two that have signed up and patiently waited for us. Antwenise Ty?
Greetings, everyone.
Good morning. Antwenise, what is your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Antwenise Ty. I reside at 12821 North Stratford Drive, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, zip code 73120, of course. I have a couple things that I want to address. I do rely on the Metro Transit bus system. It's really cold in here, by the way. Anyway. And security there, things are just a wreck and I'm sure most of you guys, if not all, know this. There's so much going on. I mean, there's, there's drugs being sold, there's people being harmed, things being stolen from others, there's alcohol exposed and again, there's, there's no service on the weekends, no service pretty much after 6:45. People, you know, they, they want to work and support their families, but if they rely on the, the transit system, they're not able to, a lot of them. And it's really unfair, it's really ridiculous and it's unacceptable. We all have a brain and we all have a heart and we need to use them if we're, you know, I, I do, there's a lot of things that you guys have gotten going. It's been two years now since I've been back from New York and it, it's nice, but really to me and my, my personal opinion, it means nothing if the main things, the more, the most important things aren't taken care of. I could honestly care less. I mean, it takes everyone as a whole to get things going and this has, it's been way too long. It's really unacceptable.
Okay. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Joe Sarge Nelson?
Joe Sarge Nelson, most all of you know me. Mr. Mayor, if I might take a half a second on a personal note. Mr. Greenwell, your tape. I was attached to Honolulu and Oahu and I got to bat on the Arizona, being a Navy man than I was. And I don't know if any of y'all know Ronnie Kay with K.O.M.A., Mr. Rock and Roll, or Danny Williams or any of them, but Danny, Ronnie Kay puts on a Veterans Day once a year at the Biltmore Hotel. And I had the honor and pleasure of meeting two of the last remaining members of the USS Oklahoma. One's a big old guy, little bit bigger than Mr. Calp's there, most distinguished, he had more medals on him than, than he weighed, I think. And the other one was a little old guy that we lost last year. And he was a little tiny guy, I couldn't believe it, this, he was the only last survivor of the USS Oklahoma. And when you did that, I brought back some fond memories out there. I have pictures of it with me, with both of them on my walls in my office. Now, on a more serious note and a common
Well, first of... First of all, the use tax is a much smaller percentage, so it isn't prescribing our budget, and the use tax is always hard to predict because it's so volatile. But the fact is, yes, it is down. It's down a million one under target, a million one under last year. We projected it'd be about the same as last year.
It's just harder to predict?
Yeah, it is, because it's companies coming in and buying equipment and drilling operations, and there's a lot of things that affect that. It's always been much more volatile and harder to predict.
All right. Citizens to be heard. We have two that have signed up and patiently waited for us. Antoinese Ty?
Greetings, everyone.
Good morning. Antoinese, wanted your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Antoinese Ty. I reside at 12821 North Stratford Drive, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, zip code 73120, of course. I have a couple things that I want to address. I do rely on the Metro Transit bus system. It's really cold in here, by the way. Anyway, and security there, things are just a wreck, and I'm sure most of you guys, if not all, know this. There's so much going on. I mean, there's drugs being sold, there's people being harmed, things being stolen from others, there's alcohol exposed, and again, there's no service on the weekends, no service pretty much after 6:45. People, you know, they want to work and support their families, but if they rely on the transit system, they're not able to, a lot of them, and it's really unfair, it's really ridiculous, and it's unacceptable. We all have a brain, and we all have a heart, and we need to use them if we're...you know, I do...there's a lot of things that you guys have gotten going. It's been two years now since I've been back from New York, and it's nice, but really, to me and my personal opinion, it means nothing if the main things, the more, the most important things, aren't taken care of. I could honestly care less. I mean, it takes everyone as a whole to get things going, and this has...it's been way too long. It's really unacceptable.
Okay. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Joe Sarge Nelson?
Joe Sarge Nelson, most of all of you know me. Mr. Mayor, if I might take a half a second on a personal note. Mr. Greenwell, your tape. I was attached to Honolulu and Oahu, and I got to bat on the Arizona, being a Navy man than I was. And I don't know if any of y'all know Ronnie Kay with Kale O'Me, Mr. Rock and Roll, or Danny Williams or any of them, but Danny, Ronnie Kay puts on a Veterans Day once a year at the Biltmore Hotel, and I had the honor and pleasure of meeting two of the last remaining members of USS Oklahoma. One's a big old guy, a little bit bigger than Mr. Calp's there, most distinguished. He had more medals on him than...that he weighed, I think. And the other one was a little old guy that we lost last year, and he was a little tiny guy. I couldn't believe it. This...he was the only last survivor of USS Oklahoma, and when you did that, that brought back some fond memories out there. I have pictures with me with both of them on my walls in my office. Now, on a more serious note and a comical note, I liked y'all's chicken clucking contests. That was really comical. But Mr. Jordan, when y'all do have your public briefing, you need to bring in some artillery. I'd get ahold of former Attorney General Drew Ebenson, he knows a lot about chickens, what goes in, what comes out, and all in between, believe me. Now, the reason that I'm here, and I'm sure I'm probably not the first, and I hope I'm the last, y'all saw this this morning in the Daily Oklahoman, right on the front page. It's about the show that's coming off tomorrow night at the Civic Center, and I won't say that I liked it, I won't say that I didn't, but I will say it upset me and made me mad. In fact, my paper got shrinkled up. I threw it against the wall. My office manager thought I was going berserk, and I almost did, almost broke two windows. I couldn't believe it to begin with. So I'm going to read this the best that I can, because the citizens of Oklahoma City woke up to the same thing I did today. It says, "Elected leaders avoid the theater spat." Well, that headline should have read, "Leaders avoided the theater spat for now." All of y'all are going to have to face this sooner or later and go on record, because this issue isn't going to go away. I could go all through this thing and talk and talk and talk, but I think the bottom line is that the way I wrote it and the way I put it together is, it's extremely offensive. I'm not holier in now, and I don't plan on claiming that I am, but I do believe there's a maker, excuse me, somewhere, that brought us all into this world, and I don't like people making a mockery of God, the Bible, or any other part of it. Like I said, I'm not holier in now, and Lord, I'm going to have a lot to answer for, but this thing here, I plan on being there tomorrow night. And Mr. Jordan, you're in the legal profession, I hope you're a good counselor, because I may have to call on your services. But the thing is, I really resent this. They say that nothing was said by any of the members of the city hall and representatives, and this Mr. Wood, Ward, or whatever his name is, said that we could not stop anybody from putting on any play at the Civic Center regardless of the content. People go to jail every day for doing that thing in the privacy of their own homes on TV and everything, and now we're going to have it on stage down here? They're going to...what are we going to go dressed to? Just wear my tie? You know, I may make a joke about it, but this is quite serious. This is...this is going to rip Oklahoma City apart, because there's...I think some of you people are going to be there, and I know that some pastors are going to be there. I hope we're well represented, because you're going to need it, because I just don't think this thing's going to float. And for all practical purposes, I wish the city well, especially on your chicken thing, and as far as this other thing tomorrow night, I don't know what to tell you. And thank you, Mr. Greenwell, for your comment. Gentlemen, nice talking to you. Y'all have a nice day.
We have executive session, and we'll be back.